Because they've heard you.
And he just never run it through, right?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion for the June 2nd meeting minutes?
I so moved.
Second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, just, we can actually do resolutions.
Just us.
You want to do?
Solid Waste.
Oh, sure.
Nobody's on the way.
Bill's not coming, evidently, right?
Right.
Sorry. Okay, we will recess as county commissioners and convene, and convene as solid waste district commissioners. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of May 28?
I so moved.
Second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolutions, Kathleen?
I make a motion to approve the June 9, 2015 bill that is presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Finance.
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, roll call, please, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the June 9, 2015 journal vouchers.
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, roll call, please, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the June 9, 2015 then announced certification as presented by the county auditor.
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, indicate acceptance by saying aye.
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 A motion to make, a motion to amend the 2015 annual appropriation resolution 14-180.
Second.
Any further discussion, this is for the scrap tire. Any further discussion, if not, roll call, please, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes. Journal entries, Kathleen?
Yeah, the Board of Commissioners' signature is requested on the outside employment form authorizing Robert Andrew Sniff, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, to obtain employment with TNT Enterprises as prescribed by Solid Waste Management District Director Bill Steiner. I guess we want.
And that two signatures?
Yeah. And the next one is the Board of Commissioners' signature requested on the outside employment form authorizing Robert Blum to obtain employment with R&amp;D as presented by Solid Waste Management District Director Bill Steiner.
Okay, boards, add it to the journal entries?
Yes.
All right. So, is there any discussion or, obviously, executive session, so is there a motion for journal entries?
I so moved. Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
We already did, I think.
Oh, adjourned?
No.
Oh, didn't we? Oh, sorry. A motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will reconvene now as pretty quick. Do you want the two minutes?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'm thinking that might have been record-breaking time.
[laughing]
All right, do we want to focus our attention on the regular, well, regular resolutions?
I make a motion that we approve the Thursday, June 4, 2015 bill's ACH payments as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, roll call, please, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Marie?
A motion to approve the Thursday, June 4, 2015 wire transfers for health benefits as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second.
Any further discussion, resolutions, if not, roll call, please, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Marie?
Motion to approve the Thursday, June 4, 2015 journal vouchers as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, roll call, please, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Marie?
Motion to approve the Thursday, June 4, 2015 then-announced certification as presented by the county auditor.
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, please indicate acceptance by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion to accept a donation to the Portage County Adult Wardens.
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
A motion to authorize the application and agree to enter into a fiscal year 16 and fiscal year 17 subsidy grant agreement with the Portage County Commissioners on behalf of the adult probation in the state of Ohio for community-based corrections program, also known as the Smart Ohio Grant.
And I'll second, I just want to ask about these grants, are these grants just automatically happen every year?
As long as they're available.
Because it sounded like that's what.
On availability and, and the beautiful thing is, there's no match.
Yeah, I know, that's why, okay.
But they still have to apply, of course.
Right, sure.
Any further discussion, if not, we want to do, we don't normally do a roll call on a grant, so just all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion to accept, a motion to accept the incentive award related to the probation improvement and incentive grant funding for the repeat offender cognitive intervention program for the Portage County Adult Probation Department.
Second.
Is there any further discussion as to the acronym of this one, PIG?
Yeah, I think we should send them a congratulations because the reason they're getting the money is because they have a G.
Yes.
Because, you know, it's $12,662 due to exceptional grant performance.
Yes, yes, I agree with you. And we can reference it as the PIG grant. I mean, I just can't believe the ad names that the government sanctions. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And we will do another.
We are not in charge yet.
Okay, I would imagine, okay. We want to proceed with the appointment of Betty Clamp.
Yes, make a motion that the Board of Commissioners appoint to the Portage County District Library Board of Trustees Betty S. Clamp.
Clamp, I'll second that.
Any further discussion, if not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that the Board of Commissioners appoint to the Portage County Mental Health and Recovery Board Alberta Toleda.
Caeran.
Caeran, yeah.
Caeran.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, if not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, if not, call.
Make a motion that Portage County Commissioners appoint to the Northeast Ohio Consortium Council of Governments, Area 19 Workforce Investment Board Nicole.
That one I do not know how to pronounce.
Diligentis.
You can tell us.
I don't know how to pronounce it. Is it an Italian name?
Diligenus.
There you go.
Oh, you got it, thank you.
I'm German, German-Irish.
This would be the labor appointment.
Yes.
Second.
Second, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And before you move on, I did contact the Maplewood Able rep, and she said she does not have the time to serve. So, would the board want me to send letters to all the principals and ask if any of the Portage County high school principals have a recommendation or are willing to serve?
I think that'd be good. Am I reading this right, we have got three open positions here?
Two business, one able, and you just filled your labor.
That's, I think that'd be an excellent.
Okay, I will do that.
So, do we advertise for these stuff?
Consistently, because on the internet, on the web, on the website.
What happens if we don't get anybody? We just, we try to recruit if we can.
And I did tell Heather, I asked Heather Carrigan and Brad Earhart, Heather, if she would consider serving on this board and the airport board, and Brad, if he would keep his eye out for anyone who might be interested. The board asked him to.
When did you get a response?
Neither.
Yeah, I think, we will follow up with letters to the people who apply that need.
Oh, yes, they're probably, yeah.
Making, encouraging them.
Shall I?
Go ahead.
Make a motion to appoint to the Portage County Regional Airport Authority Board of Trustees John E. True and John A. Son.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, if not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
I just have a question, will that leave one vacancy there still?
Yes.
That's what I thought, so we do the same thing with this as we did with the other.
We were also going to ask Brad Earhart.
Can I go?
Someone with a business background.
Okay. Okay, second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Okay.
Oh, my gosh. Discussion items for the Youth Services Subsidy Grant Award Reclaim Ohio on behalf of Juvenile Court. Another big grant.
Yes. Shall I go ahead and make the motion?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to authorize the grant agreement and funding application for the Ohio Department of Youth Services Subsidy Grant Reclaim Ohio on behalf of the Portage County Juvenile Court.
And I will second.
Any further discussion, if not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That doesn't have a local matching.
No, it does not. It would appear to me that it was all for personnel.
Mm-hmm.
Next. Oh, the draft set the subject from MDS.
We, we had talked about doing 50,000. Are we still planning to do that?
You have not got a response from the state yet. The request went to the state for 50,000 for this program, and then 18,000 for the Portage County Center. You haven't heard, so if they deny the Portage County Center, you would look to 60,000. So, we have not heard yet.
Right, and should we go ahead then and?
Would you want to consider this by journal entry, just the concept of it?
Yeah.
Can we do that?
Yeah, it was sent already, so I guess just accept it, it's a journal entry and.
Yeah, I think, and Dave indicated they would cover this after the CHIP program, so then.
Dave, what is the LMI number? Do you know?
I don't know, I can find out, I should know, and I haven't, is it in here?
I didn't see it, it was mentioned a couple of different times, and I've been wanting to ask that for some time, and unless I write it down, I don't do it, so.
Oh, that's Todd.
Okay.
And then, the only thing you would change in this last page of proposed budget, it would change to 50 or 60, depending on what the, okay.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
Just a, that was the draft.
And once we have, I'll say approved, everything that's going to go into septic systems or septic repair program, I think it'd be good to come up with maybe one informational sheet about those different funding sources, the, you know, they have a little bit of requirements, or if they don't. Well, they all have requirements.
Right.
Even using the stormwater, but that's going to give us, I think, a vast array of.
Just a summary, yeah, right.
Which is, I think, a very good thing and a very political problem.
Okay.
So, once, again, once we do that, I think maybe a one-page back sheet, so people can have that and then know where to go to, to apply.
Well, I think Todd, Pete's talked about creating something like that, and didn't Brad, I'm gonna say he wanted to see it.
We've got a sheet or two, and on my desk, I've got something, but I don't know.
You want it to be kind of simple, like, I think Todd was talking about a pamphlet, so we'll work in coordination with Todd. Are you sure that you're on?
The stormwater money comes, I mean, if that evolves as to what we thought, we'll have a very substantial amount of money to start out, and there are just, again, I don't have to repeat, there's so many people in need.
Right.
So, that would be good, and I think too, if we could maybe ask the Health Department to distribute information, and they're the ones that are going out monitoring and issuing citations or for dented people, systems.
One of the, one of the problems is that the cost of resources gone up so significantly.
Yes.
And the level for low, moderate income is so low that not a lot of people who really do need the help qualify. So, that's why it's really good that we have this other program that we're establishing.
Agreed, agreed, be able to do something for a variety of people, well, right of income levels.
Right.
Because it's still a stream, no matter what level you're at.
Right.
Okay, moving along, so this, we are adding to journal entries today.
And I'll follow up, I'll make sure that when the state, state responds, I'll follow up on that, coordinate all that.
Wonderful. Okay, the next was the.
It's an all-day guardian shield.
Guardian Shield, another exercise, right?
Oh, 8 to 10 p.m.
Ish.
Oh, wow. I was thinking 8 to 10 a.m.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have to be there all day, would we? I mean, into the night.
I think you can come, but you can't come and go, is that what Brian said?
No, come, he has to come get you, because it's.
So, you're gonna wanna wear, you're gonna wanna wear your night goggles.
Yeah.
I think they'll issue them.
Well, I think we could leave.
You can leave, but you can't come and go.
We can't come back once we leave.
Okay, yeah, I don't want to be there from 8 in the morning until 10 at night.
But, you know, this is more than one day, we're only allowed the first day.
Okay.
So, the people participating will be doing, I think, for, is it five days or three?
Five.
It's a big exercise, I don't know.
Yeah, it sure is.
He needs to make badges for you, that's why he needs to know.
Will they be living in tents?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's five days.
Maybe the National Guard will be, but.
Sure, yeah.
I don't know, is there housing?
Out there where they have the snakes.
Hmm.
Right, campervana, I equip that with snakes.
Wow, do you really?
Well, because of them crawling, you know, those, remember the old eagles?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I told you this countless times. We went on a tour, we get out of the tour, the little bus or the van, and they opened up one of the eagles, they called them eagles, where they stored the munitions, and as soon as they opened up, it's big, you know, they're built into the ground, but as they opened it up, these two snakes came, and I got back in the van and said, I've seen them.
I don't know.
I just think it's really vividly in my mind.
Okay.
So, much of that commentary.
You want to go, anybody? I did want to go, I don't know. [laughing] Well, sure, you're not finding snakes either, though.
Just wear your boots.
You won't have snakes this time, because those eagles, they're all taken care of.
No, okay. Yes, I would like to go, but like I said, I don't want to stay.
I'm gonna go and just stay until I feel I've.
Leaving.
Understood a little bit.
Well, you say Ryan has to pick us up, now, how are we gonna, I mean, is he gonna have to take us out then? We can't take our car?
Yeah, we'd be escorted in, and then, when we leave, we'd probably be escorted out.
Yeah, you used to be able to park at the gate.
Okay.
I don't know if they, they won't permit that.
I don't know, we can check more.
Yeah, do check, because I like to have my car here, so I don't.
Yeah, and then you can go.
I think you need to come out to the.
To the gate. Oh, yeah, you can drive to.
Yeah, and Ryan can intersect there, so I would stay for a little bit, knowing that part of it's inside.
Okay, it's all free.
Yeah.
And we'll get better detail now that you have a commitment.
Sure.
That's Monday, the 15th, oh, is it on fast? On that same day, Anthony Zumbo invited someone to attend the Transportation Improvement District, but he said that I could attend, it's right here in your boardroom, and let you guys know, or you can come back, however you want to do that.
What is that about, that one?
He is, he invited, at the GPD group, it's the kickoff application meeting to form the Portage County TID.
When Mayor Braska and, I'm trying to think who else came in, with Mickey, Mo Darvish, about this new effort, and we passed a resolution.
Yes, you did.
To support that, so, or I can skip Guardian Shield and stay here for that.
Well, if we stay just for, you know, a couple hours.
I'm willing to make that.
So, someone will be here, okay.
Lauren's willing to sacrifice.
Yeah, it's, there's snakes.
So, do you want to go in all then, too?
No, I guess I, I mean, I will attend that, the Transportation, so.
Improvement District.
Yeah, I'll, I'll attend that.
And that, attend the Guardian Shield.
Right, because, I mean, it starts at 10 out there.
Starts at 10?
Eight. Eight, oh, my gosh, you could come and come back afternoon if you wanted to, yeah, you know, I could do that.
He has to get a badge for you, that's why.
Okay, all right, sure, all right, I would do that if I could meet him at the gate in the afternoon. Do we want to proceed now with the second person for mental health and recovery, I, of the two remaining candidates who booked, the one that was qualified, the one had, Denise Stappel, about 30 years.
Right.
And then you have 20, so I would.
I would go with the 30.
With the 30.
I think they would, I guess they vote, but.
I agree, but I would love for us to find out, or at least notify the one who has 20 years.
Amy.
About the possibility of an appointment from the state at the end of next year, 2016.
Well, does, don't they have, oh, no, that's the first of two terms.
I wish they had another opening coming up, well, I mean, I don't wish that.
Well, Jennifer Coakro can only serve till next year in June.
Well, you know, this Terry McGuckin, this is the second of two terms, and it ends this June, so.
But that's the one, I think, that they appointed Audrey to.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay, all right.
Oh, Audrey Kessler.
Right, she's moved into.
State representative is gonna replace David.
Yes.
I think I just.
Yeah, it was in Jill Mallory's email that he sent to the board.
Do we need?
You can do a resolution if you like, you can add it to the Alberta Caeran one, if you want to do that.
Do we do that? Well, Denise, is that already?
Yeah.
Is it okay?
It's a grant.
Yeah, I'll fix it.
That was a hard choice, they both showed.
Oh, I know, that's why I don't want to lose.
No.
Amy. Yeah, Amy, she's very impressive.
Excuse me.
Oh, Mary Currier, isn't she a doll? I mean, she really is.
She's got a second part for her to announce here.
I think she's want, I think Mary's wanting to rally the troops.
And here's something to go along with that, too, I actually did this this morning, Maureen.
This is all from Mary?
No, this is, this is a memo that I've gotten ready for the board to send out, right, and here's your. It's just taking the same memo that you sent to the elected officials twice and sending it to your other internal departments. At the top, it's got the Commissioner's Leadership Team, Adult Probation, Board of Elections, that, talk about that there, and then the external agencies, like County Community Services, Mental Health and Recovery Board. So, if you can think of anybody else who needs it, I can certainly add that. We're also.
Have we resent that one to you?
Yes.
I thought you did.
Yes, and we still haven't had. The sheriff actually responded that he got it.
Okay.
He did accept one of the public hearing invitations, but other than that, I haven't heard from anybody else. There's one gentleman, Mr. Mosher, who wants to serve on the committee as citizen. So, you've got Mickey, the sheriff didn't say he wants to serve on the committee, but I'm assuming that he will. And Mr. Mosher.
Well, I mean, this isn't something that we all say, you take aye.
I did reach out to JFS, the Health Department, and Park District to see if they have any lists of external agencies, the Kiwanis, the Rotary, and their contacts, so we don't have to reinvent that wheel, but if we do, then we're, we're ready to do that, too. So, we're working on that list for you.
Deb and I briefly talked about that this morning, and I think the, most communities have a Kiwanis or Rotary, the service clubs are the ones that I think we need to also concentrate on because, just of their involvement with the community and, besides that, if we get this out to people, like, adult probation participated, I would think they could certainly, during the regular workday, their lunch period, might be able to avail themselves of going out and speaking to these groups just about, you know, the problem.
That's gonna be the key, Maureen, is getting it out and making the case.
Yeah, so, I would, that would be my, I mean, to reach out to them, and I think you mentioned, too, the chambers of Congress, they don't have meetings.
Right, right, we're working on that list for you, we'll have it for you pretty quickly.
So, this is the draft, you want to?
It's the same that I sent to the officials, it's just, if you look at the top section, the internal and the external customers, and see who else you want to add, and we'll get that, I'll get that out today.
You know, the work of Currier did a good editorial on that, too, about, it's gonna take leadership, many people, the pastives.
Yeah, we can't just sit there.
No, there's no time, I mean.
Okay, any further discussion on?
Before you move on, Vicki, the stepping up initiative.
Yes.
I will have copies of the Commissioner's Resolution and then the backup from NACO, because I have not sent this, we have not registered yet as a NACO.
For the June 10.
For the June 10 meeting, so you can distribute them as you wish at that committee, and I'm not sure if Dr. Mallory will send the register, I don't know how the board wants to do that.
I think I have information about that. I had registered for this before we were invited to.
The webinar.
Laurie Pittman's meeting, and so, when I realized that we're all going over there, I sent a question to the CCAO to find out if I had to change my registration, cancel it, re-register, what to do, and she said, it doesn't make any difference. When we get there, it doesn't matter, you don't have to do it.
This is something different, this is the stepping up initiative, Dr. Mallory sent you an email over the weekend saying he just found out about it, that's what I'm talking about, stepping up initiative. While you're at the webinar, which is the same issue, you already did your resolution, and Vicki was going to contact Judge Pittman, to see how she wanted to roll this out.
I was trying to see if that.
So, I'll have packets ready for you to hand out at that meeting, so you can figure out.
Should I give her something probably before then?
I sent you an email with the, I can send it, I'll send it again, that way you have all the backups.
She doesn't have an email, does she?
She doesn't, yeah, she.
I can just send it.
Let me print it for you, and that way she'll know what you're going to present.
Okay, I'll send it, and I'll compensate all that.
Okay, good, okay, she doesn't have an email. Okay, well, that's clear as much.
Okay. Ready for Joanne?
Okay. All right, oh, yes, Joanne.
Joanne, hey, Joanne.
You know, I think you could also email Vicki Bennett, that's Judge Pittman's.
Yes, yes.
Oh, you know what, that's who I should email.
Yeah, email to her, she'll get it to the judge.
Vicki will also take calls.
When I have her number, I will call her and tell her, is her, you know, like, V Bennett, Portage County? Yeah. Yeah, I've got her.
You'll need to get your packet, Maureen, it's right here, right now, right away.
All right.
Okay, are you okay to begin here?
Yeah, sure.
Shall I start?
Yes.
Okay, a motion to enter into the amendment number five for PRC Domestic Violence Services Safer Futures with Family and Community Services for JFS.
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. A motion to enter into a sub-grant agreement with Family and Community Services to provide service coordination for the Help Me Grow program for JFS.
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion to enter into an MOU with the City of Ravenna and the Soil and Water Conservation Office for the Phase II Stormwater Program.
Second.
Any further discussion on Stormwater, if not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion to enter into an agreement with Bryn Wynn Lewis, Williams, rather, Kingborn, Consulting Engineers for Mechanical Electrical Services for the Atwater Waste Water Treatment Plant Phosphorus Removal Project for Water Resources.
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to enter into an agreement with Workman Industrial Services to install two 10,000-gallon pre-cast tanks at the Red Fox Waste Water Treatment Plant for Water Resources.
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, please indicate acceptance by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion to declare unused excess property owned by Portage County and set the bid date for the sale of the real estate located in the city of Ravenna.
Second.
Any further discussion on that property? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion to approve specifications and set the bid date for the Smith and Cowan Concrete Removal for Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, please indicate acceptance by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion to approve specifications and set the bid date for the Main Street Sidewalk Replacement in the Village of Garretsville for Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, please indicate acceptance by saying aye.
Aye.
There are no general entries in the, the pending list. There is a pending list.
Alright, the pending list is here, the blue.
The pending list.
Yeah. Okay, for this time period, there are two new changes, if you will. The first one is number seven, the Kent Municipal Court Concrete. Today, I am meeting with the prosecutor's office, the attorneys for the contractor and the contractor and so forth at the Kent Court at 1:00 to talk about the issue and see what, how we're going to move forward and resolve.
Will Denise be there as well?
The prosecutor, yes, both she and Tim Piro. Mm-hmm. And then the other one is the bid specs for the, oh, I forgot. To check mark number eight, we'll be able to take that off the list because that's the resolution that you did today. And then number 10, the bid specs for the lease purchase of the trucks and the containers are done and have been released, so I just hope that we get some bids. So there's a few that'll come off our list for, for a change. Alright.
So can we take 10 off then?
You can, yeah. Alright, that's it. Brief today, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Keep you on.
Keep you on, going on track, huh?
Alright.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you like to do, please add to the agenda?
Sure.
Would you want to finish this one? Oh, okay, I suppose we can, sure. The information only, which is the announcement from Steve Curry about UH, no, IMH, I'll be, UH, IMH, I'm sorry. And the next was the letter that, I'm not, certainly understood it other than the area is not qualified any longer.
I didn't know what this is about at all.
Well, it's, it's from FEMA. It's talking about an area that was formerly evidently qualified for funding, but something about the elevations of the, where this, where it is built there doesn't comply with.
Just, do you know what this means?
No, we have it out here. We sent it to Randy Roberts and he's coming this afternoon, so maybe he'll have an explanation.
Yeah, it's just.
And to EMA as well.
Okay.
But it did indicate that, I thought that there no longer that area.
That, well, that was my take on it.
Will not be qualified because of.
I'll, I'll email Mandy and make sure she's ready to talk about that.
That's fine. And the other would be the journal entry.
Right.
We only have one today.
Definitely, today, sure. Please add to.
Do you want to hold late journal entry or?
Well, we could hold, but only the, if there's anything else today, we might add journal entries. Building Department.
Yes, but there's none.
Oh, and just for the vice re.
Yeah, we'll do a resolution.
Yeah, we would do a resolution. I, you know, it's fine with me, if you want to be general interest.
I make a motion, we approve the journal entry.
My second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, please add to the agenda, watch there be a journal entry. The first is to appoint Laurie Evans as the acting clerk of courts effective July 1st, 2015.
I make a motion. Just one second. I make a motion that we appoint Laurie Del Evans as the acting Portage County Clerk of Courts effective July 1st, 2015.
And I'll second, and I ask, what is an NLT? Not later than?
Not later than.
Not less than?
Okay.
Not less than. If that's the bond one, not less than.
Yeah, and there's two bonds for her?
Two bonds.
There will be. Is that a separate?
It's a separate, it's an exception.
I guess I.
And this is also based upon Linda Fankhouser sending us that request.
Right.
Asking for named acting.
It's two different courts, I think that's why.
Okay. Is there, okay, the motion was made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, please indicate acceptance by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I make a motion to fix the amount of the official bond for acting Portage County Clerk of Courts.
My second.
Any further discussion on the two bonds? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
10,000 and 40,000, huh?
Okay.
Can I see if it's the one? First, I've got a copy of the document, so that's why. Yeah. Okay, so we're ready for Todd?
Sure.
Just moving right along. There he is.
Hello.
Charlie.
I've got extremely short agenda. Doesn't mean it's not contentious, but a short one.
Ah, okay.
First, before we even get to that item, I did talk with Joanne and Joe. We had a meeting on some other issues earlier this week, and we talked about kind of the fleet management size type thing that we're dealing with. They both believe if the three of us would meet with the major users, and I think we kind of talked about them, the sheriff, the probation firm, et cetera, kind of get a feel and then come back to the board with maybe a direction, that would be a good way to go.
Are you going to meet them all together, Todd?
I would like to have an initial meeting with everyone, just to kind of outlay where we're at and get everybody's ideas.
I think that's a good idea because that way everybody hears the same thing.
Right, yeah. So if you're okay with that, we'll schedule that meeting.
That will include juvenile court?
Yeah, the juvenile, juveniles, kind of the court for probation and all that is sort of all merged, but yeah.
They, they have people on the road.
Yes, and Judge Carnes, when he was here, was one of the indicators of new vehicles.
I don't want to be the next state, but two or three new cars a year is probably do it.
Yeah.
I mean, but, new cars that, we'll get there.
Then the other item that I actually had was the discussion on the sales and use tax. I have to prepare, they call it a statement, it's a, it's a financial report that basically attempts to show the next two years, I'm going to forecast what each department would spend if the initiative does not pass, and then I'm going to try and show where the money would go if it does pass. We had briefly talked about just putting all the revenue towards a construction item, which is easy enough to do, and certainly between the remodel or whatever we want to call it, and a new pod would, would take two years' worth of revenues. The other issue, though, is Deb's trying to make the talking point list. She was sort of waiting for what we put in that plan to kind of filter that, which if we're putting all towards construction, maybe doesn't help her quite as much. So just kind of a general guideline of what do you want to show in the financial plan versus what do we actually want to talk about to the public in terms of what we're going to use the money for?
Well, one thought I think that we all shared was the fact that what we're doing now is not working, just putting people in jail. So if this produces $5 million a year, I'd like to have it broad enough so that we could, for instance, if we, in some places, they're putting a pod on the jail, but they're making it a treatment pod so that we have some flexibility. If we just say construction, then once it's paid for, if this is a continuing tax, we would not be able to use it for other good programs that might, you know, reduce the recidivism rate, so.
There are, there will be personnel needs for all those entities that sat here.
And that's the, that starts getting the issue of are we going to try and?
You can't have a juvenile.
Identify and allocate some before to put into the plan. That sort of starts getting a little more hectic in the timeframe that we have. Certainly, I believe the sheriff has indicated they need the five additional posts just to man the, I call it the remodel, but the smaller, not a full pod, but the mini pod. We could certainly work out those costs very easy.
Yeah.
In terms of the whole new pod, a lot of it depend, would depend on whether you go dormitory style or non, whether you go with this medical treatment type thing or not. So there, it would get more difficult to estimate just the sheriff's costs. And then on top of that, as you pointed out, like the probation indicated, you know, well, as they do more, we have more on our end, that type of thing. So I, I can put just construction. We can show the remodel and in-staffing and then construction towards a major pod. If, if our intent is to pay cash, we would need to save those collections throughout 16 and 17 to even begin contemplating the pod in 18. I can certainly show that in the plan. The other side of that, though, is then what, what kind of talking points are we going to use to seek its passage? Just we're building a pod, may not be enough information, so to speak, I don't know.
But I don't think we want to make any other promises either.
But you know, if we're not going to have this money to 18, I, what are we going to do from now until 18?
Well, I'm saying we would start collecting April of 16. You could certainly go to debt right then and build the addition then. The idea behind this remodel was that it would get two or three years while we had designed and looked at a pod. My advice would be to save those collections so that we could pay more cash for the pod rather than going to debt right away and using the collections to pay off the debt. Certainly in 16, we would be able to do the remodel. It's around 1.5 to 1.8 million.
I was going to say, I recall a million.
So we would, we would have enough just in 16 to do that and staff it and then save the rest of 16 and all of 17 to maybe look at actually doing a full pod in 18. At the earliest would be my idea.
This report that you're, that you're talking about, could you tell me more about what it is?
I have to take all the criminal justice services, which that in itself is a difficult list to provide. Nobody has specifically what it is. Basically, anybody that deals with the criminal element, probation, coroner, sheriff, the courts, public defense, the indigent defense, all those type of things. I need to show their past two years expenditures, which that's easy, I mean, that we can do. And then we have to show two routes. We have to show the next two years, if there weren't this tax in place, what we think the expenditures will look like. And then we have to show the next two years what they would look like with the tax in place.
The expenditures are going to be up no matter what, if you.
Well, certainly you have the inflationary, that type of thing. The question is, did we want to try and take that $5 million and divvy it into those budgets? Or do we want to take the $5 million and put it in one capital line item called construction?
Well, we don't want to do just construction. We want to use this for other things as well. Who do you have to do this report for?
It's to go to the public at your first hearing. So by June 23rd, we have to have copies available for anyone that would like them.
Who requires that we have this information for the hearing?
It's in the state law under that.
It's under the ability to issue the tax?
Correct. One of the provisions of the criminal justice.
One of the other areas that maybe you are including but didn't mention has to do with foster care for children of, of parents who are incarcerated.
That I do not believe the funds, but I can check on that. It's basically what Denise advised me, was anyone that has a role.
Criminal justice.
Investigation, prosecution, and sentencing.
And defense.
And while certainly those children are affected, I'm not debating that at all. I'm not sure that fits in that portion.
It makes our cost go up because we.
Absolutely.
We incarcerate a single mom, we have to pay to have those children care.
Or a father.
Yeah, I will, I will check into that. My initial guess, based on what Denise was telling me, was that that would not be included, but I will make sure to run that by her.
Now, Todd, if we put this in a construction, though, that doesn't give us flexibility, correct? It has to go just for construction?
Well, you can, you can change that plan. Again, the idea of this statement, it's what it's called. It's a financial plan, is to give the public an idea of how you're going to use those funds. One of our issues right now is, I don't believe we know how much we're going to put to probation versus sheriff versus. I don't, and I don't think we're going to have that anywhere close to sorted by the 23rd.
No, no.
Certainly, the major construction projects could use the entirety of the funds in the first two years. It's, it's just a matter of what do you want to show and what do you want to present to the public?
I think that there are going to be personnel needs with it, before they even bang the first nail in with a hammer. They still do that in construction. But, so, why, I wouldn't, you know, we need some latitude there. So, but you're saying, suggesting now if you put it all in a construction, that you can, you have the latitude to choose?
I don't think, I don't think this plan in and of itself binds your budgeting. In fact, there's a reference that it doesn't. But you wouldn't want to show this in the plan and have that be what voters act on and then do something totally, totally different. Obviously.
You know, one of the problems of putting it in construction and talking to the public is this is our message to the public.
Correct.
And if we say it's for building the jail and incarceration, we're not going to have as good a chance of passing it. If, unless we can be persuasive with the public, I think that this is more about their safety, about treatment, about helping families, because that's our goal, actually. So I would hate to say it's just for construction.
So what would you like, I, whatever you want, I can show. The question is, what do you want shown?
Construction and related services?
Well, you need, I mean, you need to fit it, just like within our budgets, you need to fit it to a department. You need to fit it to a line item. So if you're talking staffing, you need to say.
Well, it would be staffing.
What department's going to get this much, what department's going to get that much. And of course, you know that departments are going to use that as the bible of what they get. Not that it binds you, but they'll be expecting it.
The judges say that their dockets are full.
Absolutely.
The probation department can't, you know, adult probation, they, you know, they're in dire need of additional personnel. The prosecutor needs additional personnel. Can it be that general? You have to actually show a dollar amount to each entity? We didn't even talk to the public defender.
We have, have we seen this part of the law that, because I don't ever recall having to do this in the past.
Well, but if it's in the law, I mean.
It's, it's, the law itself is fairly vague. It's, it says you must prepare a financial statement showing prior two years expenses. And then future two years without, future two years with.
And does it delineate where those expenses?
Well, the, the, that's just what the law says. The interpretations are then that that statement should follow your budgeting process. So if you budget to labor and those type of things, then you should show it to that level.
Well, I worry a lot about giving dollar amounts. If the law requires that, we have to. But if it's just simply to indicate to the public, this is where we've been spending money and this is why we need more and indicate, without saying that we're going to give, you know, 20,000 more to probation or whatever, I think we have to be really careful. We can't promise.
Sure.
I agree.
Yeah.
But that, the idea of the statement is to show where that $5 million is going to go in 2016 if they do pass it.
Can we be more generic by saying it's going to go for expansion of the, of the jail facility to accommodate more female prisoners? It's going to provide additional funds for counseling and whatever. It's going to provide additional funds for the care of the children, for those females or males. You can, moms and dads who are.
Well, I think.
Financially, they want a number to each one of those descriptions you just did.
That's a wonderful approach, but there is an element of the population that wants people off the streets incarcerated that have maybe broken law, broken into their home. So, and I know that we all want to take the tactics, I think, for public safety. We don't know what the ruling is going to be as to the budget, I mean, the language on the ballot. We're hopeful it will be, as Kathleen has suggested, but if it has to be on there as a criminal with some annotation as to criminal activity, I think we're going to have to be.
Criminal justice services.
Criminal justice. We're going to have to be, in, in the presentations we give, that's where we're going to have to sell the idea because we're alternative.
They can't go to the polls and say something different than what we're saying.
Well, yeah, I, you're right. Oh, boy.
Well, you're, you're right. It is about criminal behavior, but that is safety. Because if we have someone out there breaking into homes, our safety depends on having that person put away.
But we want to, you know, our emphasis is on treatment and getting, as you know, as you said, that they don't return to the, to the system and, but, boy, yeah.
In 16.
It's going to be quite a, quite a brochure of development.
Well, it'll, it'll look like our budget reports for those departments, you know, two pages each department and there's six or seven departments involved.
Are you sure you have to put a dollar amount with all of this?
Wow, yes.
Yes, I mean, that's the idea, is to show where the $5 million is going. Yes, I mean, that's the idea is to show where the five million is going.
When you did the sales tax before, did you go?
Well, this was another sales tax. Before we did a property.
Well, yeah, that was last year, but I mean, didn't you raise the sales tax years ago for temporary?
That was for the construction and then it fell off when it was paid.
Okay.
Yeah.
And did they, of course.
And that, I don't know if there was a plan prepared. The, the plan.
Yeah, there was twenty years.
Appears, it's like item G within the criminal justice category that you pick. So by picking, like, if you did, if you had just chose general fund, which I know we don't want to, but that did not have that requirement, this statement is specifically one of the elements of choosing that category of criminal justice services. Yeah.
You know, so much of what we spend, it's difficult to predict because, for example, we don't know what kinds of crimes are going to be committed out there. For instance, every time we have a murder and we have to prosecute, it's another hundred thousand for the prosecutor and the courts.
Capital, yeah.
And then in the incarceration, but we can predict the incarceration perhaps. But it'd be very difficult to predict what kinds of crimes are going to be committed.
Sure.
So.
I think Todd's just looking for some direction on what he's supposed to do.
Well, one, one thing that's clear is we don't want it just be construction.
So if we, if we would do the remodel in sixteen, that's 1.6 right now is our estimate. I would guess it's going to be a little higher than that at this point, but 1.6 is our current figure plus 450, I believe, was to staff it. So that would be 2,050,000. I need to show the other almost 3 million. I need to indicate where it is being spent.
Other relevant.
Where, other.
Other relevant, inappropriate, you know.
So that's where we start getting to the issue of, do you want it shown?
Can you make it generalized in a sense of saying it would be distributed amongst all those entities? Yeah, such as, such as the courts, the prosecutors?
I can ask Denise that question.
Yeah.
My understanding is it would, because we budget to the particular groups, that's how we would be showing it.
Oh, my gosh.
What we would plan. And again, you're not, you're not actually tying your hands, but you are given a vague idea of, we think we need this much for this department, this much for that department.
Just as cost categories.
But I will check with her.
Yeah, cost categories. The federal government likes cost categories.
And can we have a copy?
We don't budget that way, though.
Yeah, I see.
The guideline, like I said, the law is very vague in what the statement actually is when you start reading all the extras of how these statements are made.
If the law is big, then we have some latitude.
Yeah.
Could you ask her that and Kathleen?
Could we have the reference of the?
I'm printing for you.
Oh, you're printing it, oh.
Of the statement.
It'll help us to understand what your dilemma is.
Yeah. So I'll start working on something, but this, we do need it ready by the twenty-third. Of course, what's the twenty-third? Is that Tuesday? So twenty-third, twenty-second, twenty-first, twenty-third, around the nineteenth.
Oh, my God.
I mean, I would like to have a draft to view before we present it. So we're talking within a week or two.
Oh, my, you know, Todd, I'm sure you've covered this.
We need to do something.
We've talked about so much stuff. Now, do we have money now without the sales tax, are you saying, to start some of this next year or not? Is it in the plan?
That's the next thing that needs talked about is what are we going to proceed with if it fails? And how are we going to fund it if it fails? That discussion doesn't necessarily need to be had right now, but certainly by November. We have to be doing that. And I, you know, we have to have a two-part plan. Well, if it passes, we're going to do all of this, but if it fails, I believe we still have to do this remodel at some point.
But right now, you're saying, if it fails, I mean, I know we don't have to, but this money is not put aside. I mean, it hasn't been planned for. Is that what you're saying?
For the remodel itself, we could, we could.
The 1.6 million?
Get it done, yes.
We could get it?
We.
We have been given about this. We're trying that.
It would not be comfortable.
How many departments are we going to close?
A full pod in, with either three or four years.
There's a huge difference, we know that.
Yeah, that, that's the scary part to. The, the good news is in eighteen, we have a million dollar reduction in our debt service. So with that in mind, I believe we could get to the remodel.
By borrowing.
And staffing it with some short-term debt to get to that point.
You know, that's going to be.
Beyond that, we cannot do anything.
If it fails, what you've just said is going to be the way it's going to have to be done.
This is the CCAO template. I don't know if you're going to follow this or not. Right at the back.
Yeah, I was getting.
Thank you. Thanks.
Somewhere there's a G.
Oh, wow. This is the amount we've already spent for the last two years. Yeah, in our two cups.
Right.
Wow. Oh, click of course.
Was that where it said? I was looking for it. I might have skipped over it.
Okay, page seven, number seven, in circles, provides revenue for the operation and maintenance of the detention cell.
No, that was my idea.
Oh, my goodness.
Here, page six, page six.
Six, page six?
At one, two, three, and four, that's, that's the criteria. A statement of the amount of expenditures made from the general fund for criminal and justice services for the last two years, estimates of the amount from the general fund that will occur later, and then a preliminary plan for each of the next two years, showing where the money does go. They provide their template then, which is what that back part is.
And they list the items, can we add to it?
They do not include, for example, public defender, which Denise indicated we should.
Yeah.
So yes, I believe ours will have a different listing. Denise searched for a definition in the O R C of what criminal justice entails, and there is not one. So basically, it's our interpretation of what we feel our criminal justice is.
Yeah, maybe we can make an ad job and family services.
And that's where, yeah, I will check that with her for sure. So I do believe there is some vagary as to what that exact category entails.
What page had that? Is it thirty-nine?
Thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
That had the.
Yeah, thirty-seven's like the current.
Come on.
And then thirty-eight and thirty-nine, and this is their format. Denise's advice was just follow our budget format, but certainly we can follow these as well.
Are these tables and is this from the law? Is this from the recommendations?
This is the CCAO, this is what they recommend. This is what, the law had nothing in terms of what it had to look like.
Okay.
So this is the CCAO's idea of what you could do to meet that requirement.
But you just said something key here. Denise has already recommended that we follow the budget.
That we just take our, how we budget and continue it on. But that, that wasn't necessarily even, I don't want to say legal advice, but it wasn't. It wasn't her do it this way. It was just, well, this is what I do since we already have that information outlined in that form.
For consistency purpose.
Right. But you can see, like, on the bottom of page thirty-eight there, you know, there's the sheriff, operation and maintenance, construction, you know, those type of things that, you know, the idea is to sort of show where the money is going.
Wow.
To each of those different departments.
Down on page three, I, you know, I haven't read all of this or anything, so maybe I'm misinterpreting what it means, but it says, if a portion of this tax is to be used for additional general revenues and a portion is to be used to support criminal administrative justice services, then the resolution must state the rate, amount of the tax proportion and so forth. Maybe all of this stuff in the back that we're talking about is based on that sentence.
No, that sentence says if you're divvying it up between two, you have to indicate exactly how much is going each year just to the two categories. Page six is saying, if you choose the criminal justice services, then this is a requirement of that category that we make this statement with those four elements. That I have checked on.
So that defines it. That defines it.
That defines, that's, that's basically what the law says, what we have to include. It doesn't say what it has to look like. It doesn't say how detailed to break out.
I'm sure the intention of the law is to inform the public how we're going to use this money and to demonstrate the need.
Correct.
Those must be the two reasons for this.
You know, Kathleen, you're right. When you think now, within the last, what is it, month or couple of months, the emphasis coming from the treasurer's state on the open checkbook and I'm sure there's.
We'll transparently.
Sure, if you're asking people to pass a tax, you've got to delineate where it's going to go.
So the question remains with the remaining 3 million, if we don't want to put it towards construction of the pod.
Where we want to put it.
How are we going to begin?
Giving it up.
Giving it up, even if we do as generic as just this department is getting this much more. We don't do it between labor and, I mean, at least, again, they're, they're purporting to show how much the sheriff's going to get, how much the court is going to get, how much the courts are going to get.
Support services such as, I thought it said rehabilitation. One of those, one of those tables had rehab, rehabilitation services.
That I have not seen.
And that would be, you know, for instance, we have contracts now with mental health and recovery board for counseling at the justice center.
Yeah, I will, if it's, if it's actually for stuff done in the jail, I believe, yes, it would work.
Is there a way, like, right now in our budget, you have a full amount and you know that this department's getting this percent? Could we do it that way? I mean, somehow the same, it would be more money, but the same percent, like, I mean, would it be safe to do that or?
Typically, within budgeting in the state, it frowns on general percents because you're supposed to consider each department's need. And if you gave 3%, let's say, to everyone, but the court said, well, we really needed four.
No, I don't mean like 3% to everyone, not across the board, but like, right now.
Based on their, right. But what I'm saying is if the courts would argue, well, we needed a greater percent than we're currently sharing. What your job is to say, well, we considered your needs, not just we gave you a blank amount. So typically.
Even though on the budget year, and we have that, the graph that we usually present at leadership, there's a certain percentage of the, of the money, say, general fund, the sheriff.
There's nothing wrong with that, yeah.
It's about 43%.
Right.
Okay, could we not use that?
That's what I'm saying. Typically, when you budget, if you just use generic percents, if there would ever be a challenge, that is frowned upon because you did not review the specific needs in creating that new amount.
But, but those percentages are actual. I mean, when we, that, that chart, that graph, that's.
That is what they spend, yes.
So I would think that would have this much validity.
What I'm saying though is the argument could be, well, you've increased the sheriff the last couple of years, but you haven't increased probation. So probation is already very tight, and now you only increased it by that amount anyways, so we're still even more tight. I mean, you, do you follow what I'm saying?
Who said or you are?
I just say, when, all state documents indicate when you budget, it should not be by general percents.
Yes.
You should, you should exhibit that you have considered the need.
That would give us some kind of history.
Yes, yes. No, you're right.
Yeah. Now, again, this, this plan, this statement, does not bind you. If, if you put this out June twenty-third and November, you change it, that's fine. But, I mean, I would hope that we would be close as to what we're saying.
You know, I shouldn't say if, I need to say when. We're so fortunate as to pass this and we've got a figure to a certain department. Believe me, they're, they're going to see that and understand what you said and go into writing. So.
Right there, yeah.
And, and a lot too is predicated on what latitude, I can use that word today, we'll have with the ballot language. Because.
You know, when that's maybe we, like, I would like to have something to you by that Thursday before, which is around the nineteenth. We can hold out a little while longer to get, do we know when that opinion's coming on the language?
Denise is going to talk about it on Tuesday. I thought she was going to do it yesterday, but I don't think she was quite ready.
Okay.
Okay. If that has an influence on how.
That's important.
Your direction here might be.
On the options that we have, we would want to do exclusively to support criminal administrative justice services and for the administration of the tax. That would be on page three.
Right, and that's what we're.
Yeah, that's what we're working on, right?
Yes, correct. Yeah. And then within that criminal justice services is where this statement by the first hearing has to be prepared.
That would be as defined in Revy's Code, section fifty-seven, thirty-nine.
Right, and that's where the page, the force on page six there come into play. So I can do.
Well, it says statutory definition of criminal and administrative justice does not include public defenders or indigent defense.
That's the CCAO's interpretation.
But Denise is saying something else.
She, she thought indigent and public defender should be in it.
You know, the CCAO interpretation is not.
The law.
No, it's not the same as the law, but they have attorneys.
I mean, I did see that.
Yeah. I'd, I'd like to read through this and try to get a better understanding of the dilemma that we're in because.
So I'll email Denise about, like, whether J F S and some of the foster programs and mental health, whether we can get those in as well. And then I'll kind of, did you ask her about the language?
Who decides on the ballot language?
But she, she's just doing it.
Before the one.
Okay. I'll indicate maybe we'd like to have that answer soon. If she can come Tuesday and answer those, I can come back next Thursday.
Is the reason that we have this dilemma because, and I don't, I don't know if this is the case, but it appears that what, what we're being asked to do is because you cannot add a tax to pay for stuff that you're already paying for. Is that right?
No. We would be okay there. I believe the idea is because we specify criminal justice services, the idea is to show specifically how we're going to use it and why exactly that need exists within that realm. I mean, that's the idea of the statement.
One of the problems that we have as a company is that we cannot refuse to pay for criminal justice. I mean, we, this takes up a good portion of our total. So what's happening currently is that we're neglecting other areas of county government because we're required to put so much into this. So that creates a bit of a dilemma.
And you can, you can show in the statement that not the full, you know, that the full 5 million is going to these departments, but their budgets aren't increasing by 5 million, they're only increasing by two because we're taking money that was needed elsewhere and putting it there. I mean, we can show that, but it is going to show up that of the 5 million that you're generating, you're really only using X dollars to increase and you're supplanting elsewhere.
To increase, but we'd be using all of the money for criminal justice.
Correct, correct, yeah. But I, and I think that's the idea of the plan, is to look at is there's, are you supplanting, which is taking money and putting it elsewhere versus increasing. So the idea, the idea is the extra 3 million, if, if we want to show the remodel, we have another 3 million that kind of needs to go somewhere.
And all these other expenses surely should come up to 3 million, I mean, I would think.
The, I would, we could, we can spend it. Yeah, we can spend it. The question is, is it, is 3 million going to go to the sheriff? Is 2 million go to the sheriff, or 1 million prosecutor? Is 1 and a half and 1 and a half? That's going to get dicey.
Can we, of the criminal justice expenses that we have now, by taking all these categories, can we figure out of the total sum, what percentage is spent in each of these areas? And then expand the.
We can do that, and in a plan, it might not be the worst thing in the world.
You say the percentages, they weren't like that.
Typically, though, funding just based on general percents is frowned on. You're supposed to fund based on consideration of need within each area.
That was the question.
Not percentage, yeah.
But I think you, I think you're not under, or I'm not saying it right. How can I say it differently? In order to project expenditures, one has to look at what the history is. So you look at the history for each of these. And then you project what the expenditure is going to be in the next couple of years. It's going to go up for each of them and it wouldn't be. It's going to go up for each of them, and they, it wouldn't be an overall percentage, but it'd be a, a different percentage for each one of those categories.
Like inflationary.
Yeah.
That will not take three million.
Not, not, no, not inflationary, the need that we have, in other words, we have a need for additional officers to, if we expand the jail or ADOP, we'd have additional need.
Right.
So taking what would cost now for X number of officers, knowing what, how many more we need, what extra money would be there, that's the kind of thing I'm trying to.
And on the expansion, that's the easy, and that we can get too easy. It becomes more difficult then to determine, well, how much extra probation people does that translate into?
Right.
Because the reality is, we're expanding the jail just to hold the people that are already there.
Right.
We're just getting them off of the boats.
Well, you know, in, in probation.
We aren't going to have more people in the jail, per se.
But for instance, if the rate of incarceration for drug addiction has been going up, say, at two, three percent a year, or seven percent, whatever it is, then the next two years, you can project that same trend line.
That I can do.
That costs more money.
Yeah.
So doing each, taking each separate thing and doing that kind of projection, I would think.
That won't come to three million, but I, we can, we can look at that.
When a judge sentences an individual, they could also, when they go to adult probation, I should say, sometimes adult probation has them, the judge sanctions, sanctions that, you know, where they have, let me back up, instead of going to jail, they might have to wear a.
Correct.
A bracelet, I think they're called, so they're, you know, they can be monitored, and they can also send them to, I'm going to use Orianna House, for example.
Right.
So there are, again, a myriad of, of possibilities in adult probation, and I could see maybe all those cost categories increasing. How do you do that?
Well, that's.
That's what he's asking.
The key, I mean, we could go to the probation department, and they will give us a figure of how much they need.
You know, I have a feeling.
The question is, do we want to show that in the plan?
Oh.
Because then there is going to be a certain expectation that that is what probation gives, that is what.
We should be.
They all keep.
Our amounts, should we?
Well, the, the statement, I have to do in dollars, yeah, I mean, I have to.
Does the law require it, or is that just our recommendation?
No, that's the laws, you have to show actual expenditures and projected over for the next two years, I mean, that's in financial terms, dollar amounts.
You know, they all came here and asked us to put on the ballot, and you can be assured, even depending on their participation in, in selling this, they will be back to say, by the way, you said I could have this much money, or, or when you give them the latitude to say, I have to have this much. I would venture to say, if we had that meeting, they'd all be here today or tomorrow to tell us how much they needed.
And it would be more than the three million.
Yeah, it'd be much more.
Yes.
Much more than the three million, so.
The other.
For us to do that is almost, I agree, they're going to look at that and say, oh, we're going to get X amount.
The other thing.
Automobiles, can we include capital?
You can include, absolutely, yes.
The improvements that need to be done at the jail that we haven't done so far.
Correct.
And the additional vehicles that are needed.
And that's where that would fall in the big capital.
Right, okay.
Budget.
But we include the capital in, in what we're doing as well, right, Justice?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do capital, personnel, and support services.
The, and with, with capital, you can just show it under commissioners because they're your buildings, so that's nice. With personnel, though, you need to say, okay, how much is going to the sheriff for personnel, how much is going to probation for personnel, how much is going to all those, all those criminal justice categories?
Wow.
And that's where it starts getting difficult to have numbers to by June twenty-third.
Oh my goodness.
Well, on the automobiles, for example, in order for us to keep the mileage reasonable for those cars, we should be replacing, say, five per year or whatever.
And we can get that figure easily, correct.
And so we need to do that, but we have a backlog.
Mm-hmm.
And we could include that.
Absolutely.
So we.
We can do that.
Plucking cars.
We have, you know, Joanne has recommended the boilers, there's.
Oh, yes.
Six, four, and four, there's almost one point three million in boilers that need replaced over the next three years.
That takes care.
But again, that, that does have a showing all, all of it the next two years in capital, which I'm okay, I, we can certainly spend it all in capital over the next two years.
But we don't want to do that, we want some for, we still have, because we need.
That's what, I, that's what we got to decide.
Can we do it with capital or not? We don't have, we don't have any, we don't have any ability, even if we put it under capital, to know once, once the modifications are made out there, it will require personnel, it will require more, let's say, counseling services and that type of thing.
Yeah, and.
That's too, too general to say can be under, it could be under capital, and then when we are out explaining to people, we can tell them that it's there, but here's.
Yet certainly, there's a verbal campaign where we are going to describe, you know, these other things come. The question is, on the financial end, do you want to show that in here that, yes, we are going to increase this department by this much, and that's because they need extra counseling, we're going to increase this department by this much, and that's because of this, or in the financial plan, do we just want to show that we have extreme capital need as it is right now and rely on the verbal campaign for the extras? The only risk you run is people say, wait a minute, here, here you only show buying cars, and you're telling me people.
Yeah.
But we could explain, well, the people come after all the capital, I mean, I don't know. The question is, in sixteen, do you envision hiring some people, if so, we should probably show an amount to the departments that you envision hiring for.
We know we need a certain number, so we should show the minimum. I don't want this to become a document for our next budget, whether we have to adopt, I think it has to be, we can do the capital part for sure.
Yeah, and it, it is not binding, but it is, it is your.
Well, I mean, if we put it in there.
Plan of what you want to do.
Yeah, we're sure, and then, you know, it's in there, people are. Putting elected officials can say, you said it was going to be used for this price.
Yes.
And, and that's not our intention to be in any way deceitful.
In fact, I'm a paragon.
Here's a suggestion, why don't you? Put together a couple of options for us.
And I can do that.
Okay, and then maybe it'll be clear next time. If we had this to read ahead of time, it might have helped today, but it's frustrating because we don't have any answers yet.
Yeah, and like I said, Deb was kind of waiting on the financial plan to make the talking points.
Sure.
I don't know, it's going to help a hundred percent.
I think with the talking points for the public, if, if my perception about running a campaign is correct, people don't want a lot of detail, they want to know the purpose, why you need it, that kind of thing, but they don't want, you know, six pages or ten pages, they're not going to pay attention to all of that.
My guess is two people will request the plan.
You're right.
But it, you know, it is a document that, that is out there with numbers as to what we intended to do, it's, I just want it to.
Reflect.
You be comfortable with what it does say.
Here, the way you're saying it and the way the law evidently is written, we have to give detail and numbers. My idea of telling people where it's going is, we're going to provide additional drug counseling for those people who are incarcerated, so that we reduce the recidivism rate in the jail.
Right.
We're going to expand the jail so that we can take care of those people who are committing crimes, to get them off the street, to make our community safer. You know, these generic kinds of things don't have numbers attached.
Right.
And we don't know for sure about the numbers, I mean, we can't be real about the numbers, because we don't know, three years down the road, how many drug addicted people we're going to be arresting, or how many murders are going to occur, or whatever.
So aren't you glad?
I will, I will get you something going, and we'll start filling that. Like, the first step is we'll get the language, because that may play a role in.
Yes, we have to have that.
And we'll also get a role in on if JFS and mental health and those type of things can also be included.
And then the capital thing should be.
For the treatment on the capital. The capital is the easiest, and that's.
Sure.
I'm okay with putting all five million each year.
That may be the good solution.
If we wanted to go to personnel, we kind of have to divvy it up by department, and as soon as you do that, rest assured, that's going to become a gold standard.
The reality sets in, it will have to go to personnel, it will have to go for cars, it will have to go for the, the system that they buy to put, so they can keep track of someone on probation, all those, as I said, you know, construction personnel and support services.
Well, we've talked about like the treatment part.
Yes.
I assume those are a lot more expensive.
Yeah. The staffing, you know, requirements there is.
Absolutely.
You don't have any resolutions today?
I do not have resolutions today, I was just getting a plan of where we're going with the, with the sales tax statement.
Let me ask you, do you really have a better idea?
Yeah, do you, I mean, seriously, how you.
I.
Because we don't.
I do have a better idea that it's going to be.
Be generalized.
Difficult.
Yeah.
Which is what I figured, but I wanted to make sure to get your, get your input. So we'll go with something, like I said, I can bring something back next week to further to the discussion, but then the week after that, it kind of needs to start being finalized, because then Tuesday will be, the Tuesday, Tuesday after that will be.
June will come and go.
You mean, absolutely, it's already almost halfway here.
It may, it may be interesting to identify which counties have put on, use, sales and use tax for the kind of purpose that we have, there may be two or three out there, and look to see how they structured theirs.
Yeah, there has not been one recently, I can tell you that, I, I've been looking.
Wow.
I, I will keep looking, though, I, I would.
We know they're having the same problem.
I would assume someone, somewhere did do it, but I have not found it yet, but I am looking.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
That's true, yeah. If anybody, see if anybody has a criminal justice sales tax increase and see what they're planning with.
How they've prepared their financials.
I did ask the CCAO about the, nobody mentioned, but there was one that said they do sales and use tax, I took a look back, the CCAO connect, I got a couple, maybe I'll be ten responses, but we're doing that spreadsheet too.
Yeah.
To see, so, it all takes time, I'm not sure.
But if we can even identify one or two counties that have done this, we could look at how they did it.
We just find one, I think.
Okay.
That was an exercise in frustration.
Well, I'll see. Okay, I, executive session. Can we cancel that one?
Yes, it's thinking.
You can.
Did you want to do talk?
Oh, yes, the, the person that we were going to talk with is not available.
Right.
Eleven, it is to, after eleven right now, so we'll have to reschedule that.
Did she, did she give us available dates?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay.
And I think we have public comment today, of course, that's.
Someone coming today, do you know, they are?
Maybe.
Okay.
I suppose she's here.
Boy, I'm still reeling from that discussion, if you want to call it that.
Right.
The ambiguity and the.
And now at two o'clock, we're having the Business Resource Network, what is that about?
Is that with Brad Erhardt?
Right. And the investment will be the.
The linked.
Yes, the, the linked deposit.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe we could do the linked deposit this morning. It's just Brad, Brad, isn't it?
If he's available.
Amy, you want to call Brad and see if he's available to do the linked deposit?
Yeah, would you let him know, though, that we do have eleven thirty, I mean, public comment.
Well, this is the Investment Advisory Committee that we have to be.
Is that a problem to move it up because it's its own?
Yeah, maybe we can't.
What about Todd's review? Do you want to move that up? That's a one thirty, can you see Todd's review?
We're doing an evaluation.
Oh, okay.
You can do that.
That might not take long.
Executive session. What about the building department?
Can we try and get him?
Can we get the building department up here?
That'd be good.
Yeah, that, that, there's some confusing information in that, but it's not going to be as confusing as this one, yeah.
Well, I'll sing easy.
I feel for Todd, I really do, because he's.
Yeah, no, that, I'm sure that's, that's so frustrating.
It is.
For him to, and he knows the constraints of putting a figure there, and then someone coming here and saying, you, you know, you indicated I was going to get this, whatever percentage increase.
Well, it does seem like it will be enlarged, doesn't it?
Oh, yes, it does, yes. Yes, I mean, and there's nothing wrong probably with doing that, we have the time and the finite figures to write on it.
We would be safe using mostly capital improvements.
Yes, 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 I think that's what it's going to come to.
And we know some, the minimum for personnel and all, we could include that, but I think we have a lot of capital improvements.
Yes, but again, it, you know, you do grapple with, when you're out, you can talk about, you can clarify those points, but the people that aren't going to attend those are, are even based on what they read, then for us to say, well, we actually meant it would have personnel in it, you know, then be questioned, well, why did you, and we, you know, we meant that there would be portions going to, you know, indigent defendants. Did Amy just walk away? She doesn't know what it means.
She's getting on to get getting.
See if, if Randy can come up.
Oh.
No breakfast?
Maureen, how much did you?
You know, when I came in, they said, you know, we're getting lunch in, I says, well, how much do you need? And they said, Maureen's buying lunch, you said, you don't need any money?
Would you like for us to share?
No, no, no.
Are you sure?
No, I'm, I'm sure, it's just.
Well, what we'll do, we'll take the term doing it, so that way, that's, that's right. I used to do that in the treasurer's office.
He's on his way.
Oh, good.
Then we can ask him about this FEMA, I guess, I don't, I think, don't think he's really going to be able to shed much more light on it, it's just that it doesn't qualify anymore.
Oh, who's it against, while we're going to come up, I can.
Are you ladies today finding a nice day?
Yes, it is.
Thanks for coming in.
Oh, no problem, I, like I said, I just had this, the phone rang, I thought, I bet you that's Amy, I don't know why.
Intuition.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, I have two parts I'm here for, as I understand it. One is this letter that Maureen received on this FEMA issue. I have to tell you, when I received this too, I, when I got my copy of it, I was like, what is this? Doesn't make any sense.
I'm glad you said that, yes.
Okay, didn't make a lot of sense to me, and the reason it didn't, as I read through this, it talks about a Loma, or Letter of Map Amendment, which is a FEMA acronym for when someone has a parcel of land that's in the floodplain and they want to look at removing it, and they think they have data to do so, so I didn't know, so I.
Could you say the Letter of Map?
Okay, it's a, one of the common terms in the FEMA and floodplain environment is a Letter of Map Amendment, and it's often referred to, the acronym is LOMA, L-O-M-A. And what that means is, if a, if a owner of a property feels that by elevation, topographical elevation, that their property is above the floodplain, they hire a surveyor, they have the property surveyed, the property and/or any buildings on the property, and that surveyor determines relative to where the floodplain is, are they, are they in it or out of it by elevation, by being higher, very simple terms to make it simple. And if they, if the surveyor can prove that in topographical information and elevation numbers, there's a form that we have, that FEMA has, and we provide it to homeowners, they fill all that out in concert with their surveyor, and they send it off to FEMA. They fill all that out in concert with their surveyor, and they send it off to FEMA, and FEMA reviews it, and if they agree, generally takes, my estimation from the ones I've seen is within thirty days, they submit information back to the owner, here is your Letter of Map Amendment, your parcel of land, or perhaps the buildings on your parcel, home or such, are by elevation out. And, and that, that's a matter of then, record. And the reason that that's important to a homeowner is mortgage companies are the, the business that demands flood insurance, if there's a mortgage. They look at floodplain and they demand flood insurance. And so, that is a way that perhaps, and I have to use the word perhaps, because mortgage companies aren't always logical, will then say to the homeowner, oh, okay, well, you've proven to me beyond a shadow of a doubt that your property is out of the floodplain, FEMA says it's out of the floodplain, and so therefore you don't need flood insurance. In some cases, mortgage companies say, I don't care. You still need some level of flood insurance. That's just the nature of the beast. And it's the business model of the mortgage company that dictates that. FEMA has nothing to do with that. So, in this particular case, this was puzzling, the first part of the puzzle was, it was addressed to the Board of Commissioners, this document. And basically, what this document says is Portage County is in violation of this particular parcel because we let a house be built in a floodplain, where the lowest living level of that home is below the floodplain. So, my first thought was, well, this just doesn't make any sense, but let me investigate. So, I went to the auditor's records, and the auditor's records indicate that this home was built in 1955. Well, that was a week before building department existed here, so how, what's this all about? So, I called the gentleman whose name appears on this letter at the Region Five Office, Mr. Kaler, Frederick Kaler, and he said, well, you got me there because you guys get these letters before we even see them at the regional offices, when they come out of Washington. Could you send me a copy? So, I scanned it, sent it off to him. He got it, said, we'll look into it. And this morning, I spoke with someone in their office, and now we've got a lot more information.
Oh, good.
Okay, the information is that this Letter of Map Amendment, or this challenge, this case number, was actually filed by Wells Fargo Bank in behalf of the current owners of this property at 10106 Nichols Road in Shalersville. Because what, what apparently happened was, is in the, and these people just took possession of the property, I'd have to look here at my records real quick, I think I have it, I don't know if I have the sales document here. I did print some of it off, I don't, but they just took possession of the property this year. It was a real estate transaction. And in the real estate write-up, it was stipulated that this is like new renovations, new, new, new things to make the house sell. So, the owner's saying, well, if all of this was done, and the bank's saying, if all is done, it should have been, floodplain should have been followed by Portage County. Well, the fact is, I, the only records that I have of permits for this address is from 2003, that was a result of fire damage. And there was a fire, we did inspections per the, per our policy, and the owner, or I can't remember if it was the owner or contractor, got building electrical mechanic permits for repairs. And that's the only thing that was done, that we have record of. Now, it's not to say a homeowner didn't build an addition on this house that we're unaware of and they didn't follow the rules. I have to look into that. After I spoke with the people at the FEMA Regional Five Office this morning, I have some things I have to do now to bring some clarity to this, submit information back to FEMA, which will sort of prove that we had no involvement in anything going on there. Might have be, it might just be words in a real estate sales brochure that they had this work done. They may have done things in violation of the building codes and zoning and other things. We don't know yet. But it's ultimately, be assured, I can, that nothing will come back on the county as a result of this. And when there is a violation, I said, well, why would this be addressed to the Board of Commissioners versus me as the floodplain administrator? And they said, whenever there is a violation, it goes to the CEO, which is you ladies.
See, I thought the Commissioners asked about this.
No, I, that was my first, I thought, well, why would, you know, why would Maureen ask about this and I not know about it? So, and the other part of this that's important is, the very first line in this letter, it says, response to request dated April 7, well, 2014, actually, it was April 7, 2015, relative to the new owner. Okay, so that's a typo, that's a typographical error, I did learn that. So, like I said, what I have to do is, I have to do some homework for FEMA in behalf of ourselves. I have to provide them with documentation, and I think what's going to ultimately come out of this is, is that either one of two things, either there was some assumptions made by the bank based on a real estate proposal for the property, saying what was, that it was updated and it was done this and done that, or actually some things happened and there, the prior homeowner was in violation of building codes, county resolutions for permits, et cetera, and we'll have to work backwards on that and see what happens. Now, go ahead, Kathleen, you have a question.
I was going to say, you'll contact this person they're telling you-
I've already spoken with them. I spoke with two people in their office, now great length, both by email and phone, and they're very helpful, and they're saying, you know, this is, this, there's something weird here, and we think you're going to be able to resolve this and make it go away, is what their belief is. Interesting point in all of this, in my conversation with the FEMA Region Five Office this morning, the lady that I was speaking to made a, made a comment, and she said, well, how do you handle, like, when you have a major, like, a, you know, major disaster to a home, how do you handle that? And I said, well, what do you mean? And what, we got to the bottom of it, what happened, what happens is, is we are under an obligation, and I'm going to raise my hand and say, I was totally unaware of this, but we as a floodplain administrator, me, are, have an obligation, and the weird obligation is, is that when, let's say, the fire damage occurred, I'm going to use that as an example, okay? When something happens that causes either reconstruction or major remodel of an existing structure, and I'm saying the footprint doesn't change, it doesn't grow, because if it grows, then I have to look at the floodplain for the, for the addition. Let's say that somebody wants to put a family room on their house, and it's in the floodplain. I, we, we look at the application when it comes in, we compare it to the floodplain maps, and we say it's either in or out, and if it's in, then I notify the applicant, whoever that is, owner or contractor or both, and say, you're in the floodplain, you have to abide by the Portage County floodplain regulations, and I give them chapter and verse of what they have to do. But if, if they're doing a fire damage and it's within side of the existing confines of the house, to me, it never, didn't matter if it's in floodplain or not. Well, guess what? I'm wrong.
It does matter.
It does matter. And if, now we have to use, in FEMA's ordinances, we have to use a percentage of what is the cost of repair to the market value, and if it exceeds, that homeowner's got to bring that house out of floodplain.
Oh, my.
And that's going to cost them a fortune. But I have, I'm obligated now to fulfill that obligation under FEMA ordinances, so it's going to be an interesting scenario. Hopefully, we don't-
Hopefully, this particular one won't need those guidelines.
Well, yeah, this, hopefully it won't, and others won't, because maybe a fire damage is $50,000 and the house is 200, and I don't know the percentage yet, but there's, if, if the percentage that FEMA stipulates, whatever that magic number is, it's going to be up to someone in my chair, whether it's me or the next person, to find that out and disseminate that information, and then advise the applicant owner what they have to do. And it could be, you know, it could be open a can of worms, that's the best way I can describe it.
The more you talk, the more I realize what an asset you have to have in Portage County because of the knowledge that you have. I mean, I'm sure you won't even know what you know. I mean, you don't realize how much you-
Sometimes you get into these things, you, you know, it's like, it's like swimming through muddy water, you don't know what you're going to hit till you hit it.
You're so thorough.
It's, it's amazing.
Randy, I have a sense of consolation to you, the problem with the community, think of it this way, oftentimes, the lawsuits come here too.
Sure, well, that's why, because this is potentially such a thing.
Right, no, I, yeah, and think of that a lot.
Do these homeowners have any recourse if they were sold this house, not knowing that? I mean, I don't know.
I, as I often tell people who call me with that kind of question, that's, that's a matter for a real estate law attorney. That's, all we could tell them is, is what technically was done wrong, and in the Ohio building codes, we have this special chapter in both the residential and the commercial code books, it's called existing, existing conditions. So, there's, there's not a statute of limitations, per se, in a timeline that we can't go back, but if we find something was done wrong-
Sure.
-the owner can come to us and say, let's use this house as an example, let's say they put a big addition on this house, and nobody came to us for anything, zoning, nobody. What I can do, what the owner can do is, they can ask me to provide them with a certificate of occupancy for that existing condition. What I then have to do is, they have to fill out some forms, they have to take out some special inspection permits, we go out and we inspect the house for any serious safety hazards, building, mechanical or electrical. If we find no serious hazards, then I'm obligated under the law to issue that certificate of occupancy to them, and that's kind of how, how the pieces fit together. Whether it's commercial, residential, that part doesn't matter, and that's provided for in the, in the Ohio codes, so it's, yeah, it's, it's a little wild ride sometimes.
Is there a variance for people, is there a variance process or appeals process?
Sure, there would be, and there is, and that's through our Board of Building Appeals, which covers, now that residentially covers, if, if I tell somebody they have to do something, then I'm also going to, I'm going to give them an adjudication order, it's going to be delivered by certified mail, and within there is going to be all the details of their right to appeal and how to do so.
And does the Board of Appeals have the authority to give them variance concerning floodplains?
Sure. They absolutely do. Now, they prob, if the law was very specific in certain conditions, then they would have to follow, they would still follow that law, because they would say, well, there's, I have no choice here. FEMA laws, or the law of the land says, here's what you have to do by something specific, or the Portage County board of floodplain regulations that we, that we brought up to speed in '09, when the maps changed, are very specific, they're adopted into resolution, so they are law. And so, I would think that my comment to that would be, I doubt that the Board of Appeals would just arbitrarily say, no, you're fine, you're okay, or, because it's, that's, that's pretty, a pretty touchy area.
On this particular house, it, they found that it was below the floodplain and therefore should not have been given permit to rebuild the fire damage without raising their house to-
Possibly. I've been pleased to use the word possibly, because we don't know any of the numbers that would have applied at that time. And so, of course, the homeowners, I'm sure, don't want to, don't want to pay for flood insurance, it's not, it's not cheap, and they're in the heart of a major flood area. They, the river's behind them, and it's just a major, the whole area, so they're not alone. And so, I'm sure they're saying, I'm almost going to be willing to guess and bet that the home was sold, nobody told them it was in a floodplain, and their mortgage company said, you owe us more money. And now they're saying, well, how come? And they're doing their due diligence to find out, and they're trying to, they're grasping for as many straws as they can, hoping something will come to the surface.
Get a little piece together.
Yeah, and so, we'll, we will, I will be providing, I'm going to go out to the property, but from the street, I'll take some pictures, that's what they, FEMA's requesting. I'm going to use Google Earth, our auditor's mapping systems, our auditor's record of what's there, things of that nature, so that we can see if what's there compares to what looks like everything else, that will tell us whether or not additions were put on. And then, we can make some assumptions that if any work was done, it was inside the house, you know, and upgrades, or people do that all the time, upgrade a bathroom, a kitchen, you know, new kitchen sinks, counters, whatever that might be. And hopefully, we'll be, I will be able, I believe, to prove beyond a shadow of a doubt to FEMA that Portage County had no actions in this whatsoever, and then we'll see what that brings up.
Okay, thank you.
All right?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Randy.
Yes. Next pile is this one. All right. I'll try to, this is on the ISO, which is the Insurance Services Organization. They do a grading period, every five years, they do an audit of code compliant offices, primarily fire departments and building departments, that's, those are the two prime characteristics, and zoning as well sometimes, but primarily building and fire. So, what we got is, and I think you all got it, did you all get a copy of the checklist? Excuse me, of the, this little grading list that's in there? So, what happens is, is they look at us from a standpoint of commercial and residential buildings, a little different than the way Ohio looks at it. Their, their definition of residential is one and two family. Ohio's, Ohio's definition of residential is one, two, and three family. So, that, that's the only variance. Now, what happens is, is we look through this list, our last review, which was in 2010, and I have the letter here that was addressed to Chuck Kuiper at that time, what happened was, is, this is on a scale of one to 10, one being the best, 10 being the worst. At that time, in 2010, we received a level nine for residential, pretty low. We received a level four for commercial, up in the upper half. The reason we got a level nine, and it specifically is bullet pointed in the letter to Chuck at that time, which we got a copy, it says, out of date residential building, mechanical, fuel, gas, and plumbing codes. Now, what happens is, is ISO, they look at the code, the nationwide codes that are developed by ICC, the International Code Council. Well, Ohio is always trailing in those. So, right now, ICC is on 2014 and 2015 codes. Ohio's codes are based on the 2009 ICC codes, and this is just the way the state of Ohio does it. So, in 2010, when we got that very low residential, everybody in the state got a, every building department got slammed, very simply stated, because of those types of things. Well, now, Ohio updated their residential code, and so we got a better rating. And so, now that we moved from a number nine in residential, we are now at number five in residential.
It's not here somewhere.
It is, it is not listed in there, it's, it isn't even listed in the letter, and I kind of challenged them, well, why didn't, you brought up, we dropped one in commercial, why didn't you, like, say, nice job, you moved from nine to five in residential? Well, they didn't, so that's just a matter of how somebody writes the letter. So, we did move up, so that's a good thing. And it's not where I would want it, I'd want it at a one, if at all possible, but there are, go ahead, Kathleen.
For commercial, we moved from what to what?
We moved from a four to a five. And that's what it's stipulated in that, in that letter, that's actually addressed to you, and I got one addressed to me, or it's a copy to you, and it says in, about the fourth paragraph down, it says, the new classification results in a former four for commercial industrial property, and was a, was a four and is now a five, so-
And that's going back-
It went backward, it regressed, it went the wrong way. So, I said, well, my goodness, you know, what's going on? So, again, email and phone calls to ISO, because we have a contact in the letter, it tells us to contact Mary Lucidia. And so, I'm, now I've been in contact with her over the last couple of days here with emails and phone calls, and I think I have some results that I can share with you that are going to be positive, or that we, we will make positive. If you go through all this chart, what we have to understand is, there's certain things we have no control over, we never will. The very first item is adopted codes, the section 105 on this chart. We will never have control over that, because those are state mandated, so they kind of are what they are. And as I said to the lady at ISO, this Mary, I'll just use her first name, she said, oh yeah, we understand that. And I said, I know you do, but it doesn't, it's not reflective in the results. Well, it can't be, because this is a broad spectrum, we look at everybody, everybody's treated the same throughout the United States. So, because Ohio doesn't follow the current ICC codes specifically, that's kind of like your tough luck. Okay. So, as you go down through here, and if we drop down to section 140, zoning provisions, you'll see we got zero points, the center section, the gray, is the possible point you can get, which is one. Well, that's because we don't have zoning here. Our zoning is through each community, therefore, it's not in Portage County's control, so you get no points, because you don't have zoning. Again, out of our control, so-
At least you have an asterisk there.
Well, but they don't, I know, I, logic says you should at least be able to identify these things to make sense, so I have to go, I have to go through this list, and then I have to go through-
This list?
This book to correlate it and make sense, although I think I understand most of them, I re-verify. Well, one of the things that I have to tell you, this Mary Lucidia was very nice about is, she says, your, your drop from a four to a five in- is, she says, your drop from a four to a five in commercial was very minor, very minor, it just kind of puts you over the edge, there's a range, and just puts you over the edge. And she said, looking through all of the gradings that we gave you, there's a couple areas, I think, if you give me some more information, I can get you back to at least that level four. And that is training. We fill out a form, part of this application, it's a thick book of pages that I have to fill out, one of them is everybody who is in our department who has a certification from the state. We have to fill out all kinds of information on them, hours they work, training that they've had, where we get certificates that we've gone for hours of continuing ed. And at the time this was created, it said, fill this out from the, just the last 12 months, which was, we did this in May, or March, so from March 14 to March 15, tell us how many hours you've had. So, I did, I talked with everybody, we verified the numbers, and I put down, for example, I put down that I had 15 hours of continuing education in that window of time. Well, now, what they're going to allow me to do is expand upon that, and say that I had continuing, what are my continuing education hours from January 1, 2014 to today, which now, that number of hours that I had has grown by eight. Okay? So, that, she thinks that alone, that alone will help. Concurrently, if you look at section 145, contractor builder licensing and bonding, for whatever reason, and I can't explain this, because when I filled out the form, we have an auditor who sits across the desk from me, comes from ISO, we sat and talked with that person, and on there, I had everything filled out that we require, contractor licensing, bonding, registration, all those things was checked off. The paper they got, it was blank, it wasn't checked off at all. Don't ask me how. So, she pointed that out, and I said, well, not only do we have that, I said, but the state of Ohio, for contractors, technical contractors, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, et cetera, they have a test procedure, that these people have to take a test, so I'm going to get all that from Carol Ross at the Licensing Board down at Department of Commerce, put all that together, along with our resolutions that we have, and everything that I have for that, and send it off. And this lady, Mary Lucidia, believes that with that, that'll get us back to where we were.
Oh, good.
And so, we'll be, we would be at level four for commercial, and level five, an upgraded residential from nine to five. And it may even have some impact. And the problem also in this document is, because we fortunately are smart enough, and intelligent enough, and we're careful, we carefully plan our manpower, they also look at the number of inspections you do versus your inspectors. And you get, you get demerits for having part-time people. Because we, because we're effective, and because we're economical, we get hurt in the grading period, because we have part-time people. Now, I know, isn't that wild? Doesn't that make sense? So, all I can say is, is every five years, we're going to do this. Every five years, it's a struggle for whomever does it, building departments, fire departments. It's, I will say, it's extremely rare, although there is, there are fire departments, and they're more likely to get the best ratings, because they're less subjective. And they have more required training and ongoing things that they can put together, that they can show proof of, just because they're small. For example, if we go to the, I'll use City of Kent as example for building apartment. Well, they have zoning as part of their building apartment, so they're going to get a number for zoning where we can't get, it's impossible.
The good news is that our residential came up four points, probably that means that the residential insurance cost should go down.
Well, it should.
And you're going to respond to them by June 22nd, and then maybe get back up to the four.
Yeah, and they're, all I can tell you is, this lady who's in part of all of this is confident that, she said, you're just kind of like over the edge, she said, if you were at the bottom of the five, it would be hard.
Thank you so much for this, because your explanation is really terrific, and when we first read this, we didn't know what it meant.
No.
So, that's why we asked you to come.
Exactly. I was, if you hadn't asked, I would have asked if you wanted me to, if you put it that way.
Right.
Okay, well, those are the things I had. I do, before we break, I have two other subjects, and they're a little bit on the personnel side, so I don't know if you want to go into executive session on that, or if you just want me to, and I'm going to be, I'm going to be candid.
We have a public comment at 11:30.
Could we have you come back?
Sure.
As, you know, we thought we could do all these.
Just two quick comments, and it, but I don't want to, if you don't want them on, they're going to be very candid.
Oh, no, 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 what I meant was, you could come back for this.
Sure. Yeah, okay. You tell me when.
Yeah, we don't want you not to have a time.
You tell, 1:00?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll come back at 1:00.
Thank you.
All right? Very good.
Thank you very much.
That was so interesting, my goodness.
Indeed. I'm confident we're going to get back after that.
Oh, I think so, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Mary, I see you've got pictures or something for us there.
I'm just looking at them, I can't remember if I've already showed it to you. I don't know what I've shown at people and what I haven't.
Yeah, busy lady.
Yes. Two things. The first thing, a quick update on what's happening with Trumbull County. George and I attended one of their big meetings, just to have Portage County's meeting in the pot there. It's Portage, Ashtabula, Mahoning, Athens, and probably Stark, probably Columbiana, maybe Mercer, and maybe Lake Counties. These trustees there, and some commissioners are still in this little committee meeting, trying to create some kind of legislation to end the number of new wells, and they're hoping to get a freeze. It's all very up in the air, there are a lot of people there, they all have different ideas, so we keep going to the meetings, we're going to another one this Tuesday. There's next, there's no point in really giving you a huge update, because it's all 20 different opinions.
Did you say Columbiana County was participating?
They think Columbiana will.
Just to review, what you just said, Portage, Ashtabula, Mahoning, Athens, Columbiana, and Trumbull?
No, for sure, it's Trumbull, Portage, Ashtabula, Mahoning, and Athens.
Okay.
And still seeking for Stark, Mercer, Lake, and Columbiana. And you will all be very much involved, and we're representing you very quietly in the background, by trying to get them to do what we think they should do, but gently.
Good. Well, I think joining together like that gives us a more powerful voice.
Yes, yes, for sure. And I think you'll end up being the voice, so, you don't really need to know that. Yeah, so here's the second thing. This is a letter that was written by the Center for Health and Environmental Justice in, thank you, in, they're from Columbus, and the Sierra Club Ohio chapter. It's a long, complicated, hard-to-read letter. I have read it, and read it, and read it, and read it. And what they did was, they sent a letter to the Office of Environmental Justice of the EPA, and they have asked for the, this Office of the Environmental Justice, which is the investigating arm, to please investigate all these abuses.
Wow.
Now, this is a summary of the letter?
I also wrote the summary, so you wouldn't have to read the letter.
Oh, okay. Oh, my gosh.
Because the letter, you know, you'll just plow along like I did, or, I don't, you're used to reading that kind of language, it's a tough letter. So, I summarized it.
This is amazing. Amazing.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's a pretty good letter, but it's tough to read. So, what you'd be agreeing to, if you want, what they would like to ask you to do, and what we, we in Concerned Citizens Ohio would like you to do, is write your own letter supporting this letter. So, your letter would be directed to this Matthew Tehada, I think that's, saying, we are in support of your, of the letter you recently received, submitted, yeah.
It says the U.S. EPA's oversight of ODNR's Section 1425 program is woeful.
Woeful, woefully inadequate. So, in, to summarize very briefly, what this whole big letter is saying is that regulations are incomplete and inadequate, they were never developed correctly 34 years ago, when the Safe Drinking Water Act wasn't properly delegated to the state of Ohio, that the population of Appalachian Counties, which is actually 32 counties of the state, are receiving the undue burden of all of this, while the rest of Ohio is getting the profit. There's no timely process of appeal and application, which is a complete and total boondoggle, so public and scientific and government involvement is impossible, which is so hard to read, that that's why I made the poster, in case you really want to know how hard it is to appeal, I can show you the poster, that's a two-minute project over there. And that the EPA's ultimate audit, like he was talking about, and review of the underground injection well program consists of a couple of little pages of gushing language, as they describe it, gushing language. So...
It sounds like someone's on our side, I think.
Well, these people are very much on our side, it's the CHEJ and the Sierra Club of Ohio. So, that's, we're hoping you will write that letter. And if you would like, if you would like to know why the appeals process is a problem, I can show you the application, or you can, you want to see the poster?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make it really fast.
I'm impressed that you found, they found, the Office of Environmental Justice, it almost seems like an oxymoron, but...
Yes.
I think there is such a department.
Yes, no, I agree.
Oh, my.
Whoa.
Okay, if you are going to have an underground well, injection well, put near your property, you are allowed to appeal the, appeal that, and here is the process for doing it. First of all, there will be a notice in the paper, a paper of general circulation for five days. You hope that you notice it.
A legal notice?
Yes. One of those little tiny ones.
Yes, yes.
Also, at the same time, a letter will go out, I don't want to laugh while I'm doing this.
You know what, Mary, we want to stand over here, and I'll go over there, because Mike's trying to see that also.
Okay. Also, a letter will go out to the well owners and well operators within a half mile, but not to any of the residents, telling them this is going to happen. Now, if you, let's just say it's you, Vicki, you would decide you want to, you want to, you heard about it through the grapevine, you want to, you want to appeal it. You have to obtain the application.
Okay.
So, you, to do that, you must contact the ODNR, which on average will reply within 60 days. Remember that number. But even if you get it, the applicant is not required to respond to you.
Of course not.
Now, you may not see the whole entire permit, which would have all the geological specifications on it, like exactly the sighting of the well, the therm, the incline of the land, the floodplain, like this guy was talking about, how deep would the well would be, none of that, you won't be able to see any of the specifications, so you can't hire your own expert to go in on your appeal to say, well, we think there's a different kind of rock layer there, we don't want to go see you go down 5,000 feet, or, you know, we are a quickly charged doctor for whatever. You will not have any real input, so you may not see the permit with geological water, engineering, geological and water and engineering specs. If you want expert analysis, he will have to guess at these well plans. You must return the comment, the comment that you make, within 15 days of the notice, of the last day of the notice, as it appeared in the paper. Although, since it took them 60 days to get back to you, you probably can't make that deadline. If the ODNR, and this would be the one chief of the ODNR, it's not a review committee, there's no environmentalist there, there's no other scientist, if the ODNR considers your comment valid, you may attend a hearing, it will be in Columbus, and so far, no such hearing has ever been granted by the ODNR, ever. Now, they've made an amendment to this process in recent times. This is a kind of an addition to it. Drilling permits actually cannot be appealed anymore at all by this method, although this method is still on the books, so I have to leave it here. Instead, you would ask for a secondary permit for beginning, for the beginning of the, for the initiation of the well, the well will already have been drilled, okay, you couldn't appeal that, but you can still appeal its operation. But you have to appeal before the test of the well, which consists of a 15-minute pressure test. They push water down into the well for 15 minutes, if the pressure can be maintained and the well is okay, it's good to go. All right? So, the 15-minute pressure test will occur, you can appeal before that, but there is no public announcement of the time of that test, no notice of it, and there's no time for public comment of it.
So, how do you know when?
Excellent conclusion.
I know nothing.
So, you can skip that page of the letter, if you don't want to walk through it.
I love the chart. Yeah, yes, I do, I'd like a picture of it. We should get a photograph of it.
You know, that just, that's amazing.
Particularly where the part in the top says, they don't have to respond, you don't have to hear it.
No.
Well, 60 days, you don't have enough information to be able to appeal within 15 days.
No. So, when you see construction going on in a field near you, it's just the way it is. So, if you would, here's my request to you, to write, I hand this out, I don't think I did. This is my request to you, to write a letter in support of this letter, just saying, basically, that you're pleased.
Thank you.
And...
Thank you. It's so disturbing. It's so disturbing. I'm going to win one more. Well, I had a phone call yesterday from a citizen complaining about the activity that's going on in Allen Road well site, they're removing dirt. And he had recalled that the dirt had been contaminated a few years back when some trees died, the trees had to be replaced. And so, he wants to know whether or not they have a mitigation plan for getting that dirt in the right spot, not just putting it in the landfill or something. And so, I called our contact person from ODNR to ask the question, I haven't heard the response yet. The other concern that he had is that there's trucks coming and going all times of day and night, it's very noisy, very disturbing for the neighbors. And so, he calls ODNR to complain, and ODNR said, that's not our issue, that's a local issue, and you do have local control. So, my question now, which I think I'll give to, I'll find out from regional planning, is that we can, I don't know if the townships can do it on their own, if they have the zoning code, which I think they can, have restrictions as to work hours for noisy construction things. I know in Kent, there's one. I think if a township has a zoning code, they can do that, or the alternative is, if they can't do it, then the county can do it for those unincorporated areas. So, I think that's something that we need to follow up with, and I just thought you'd be interested in that.
That's great. Is this the gentleman that the company called the sheriff?
Yes, yes. He calls me, too.
Yeah. Well, I think the important thing is, if, if, whatever we find out, local communities need to know that they can put this in their zoning code, if they don't have it already. And that, for instance, in Kent, I think it's, you can start making commercial noise at 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning, and it can go till 9:00 o'clock at night, something like that, I don't know the exact hours anymore, so that you can't have noisy commercial activity going on during the night.
Yeah, I don't know what the townships can do, and part of the problem where he lives and where they all live, is there's a compressor that runs all night as well, all summer long, it has to, to keep the pressure.
But can't they mitigate the noise by having barriers or something?
Or something.
Possibly.
Yeah.
These tanks are just out in the middle of the air.
Particularly if, and a township may have, within their zoning regulations, they may have...
It's higher in township...
And if they don't have it, it's something that we can either get a letter or Todd can get a letter out to them suggesting a model language to get it done.
Are they in the township or the village?
They're in the township.
Township, of course, they would be. They might want to contact their township trustees and ask them.
They've been to their township trustees. Yeah. There's so much irony in that particular township. I, yeah. And I am still, yeah, I am still in the process of going out to all the townships and so forth.
But I think we can, regional planning can offer some assistance with that. First of all, identify which, what the language should be, and then look in the zoning codes for the townships to see if they have it. If they don't, notify them, give them a copy of the model language and make it done.
And ask them.
Did the man who called you, have you, did you tell him that as well?
Yes, I did, but I said we have to find out.
Right, okay, good.
But I didn't, I mean, that was yesterday, I didn't get a chance to do it.
He hasn't called me today, yet.
Mary, just for clarification for me, that U-I-W is Underground Injection Well, correct?
Yes, yes.
And this last paragraph, U-I-C, what is that?
Underground Injection Well Control.
Oh.
And then program is sometimes added.
Okay.
Yeah, I was forever wondering what all these things meant.
Could we put on the agenda for next time? I just asked her. Oh, thank you. Added as a, as a letter?
Yeah, yes. Okay, thank you very much, Mary, for all you do. Well, thank you for allowing us to come.
Absolutely.
I'm using with the...
By the way, did you get my email?
I did, and I declined very sadly.
You declined?
I declined.
Oh, contraire. Oh, no, 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 you have to, you're here now.
I can't, I already had something I have to do. I'm typing, I'm creating, I'm, I'm the writer behind the Troma County thing.
Well, that's great.
You've got a full-time job.
You have to have, you have to have some sustenance so that you can write that. Come on. Recession for lunch?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that.
Thank you. But I really, really, really appreciate the invitation.
Oh, well, then we'll give you something for the road.
In some strange ways, and I do understand, down there, I went to a couple of their meetings that were, they were trying to get it reinstated.
That's the place where they have that fireworks thing that drove them crazy.
I was just down there, they're going to reopen.
See, no, that's because they don't have zoning.
Yeah, well, they, yeah, so they, it's one of the, but fortunately, the person who had it before with all the problems is, he passed away, so somebody knew it was going to be a problem, so.
Randy, thank you for being flexible.
My pleasure.
Mrs. Greer was here, so thank you so much for...
Sure, not a problem.
Being willing to call.
Not a problem.
Okay, so you would like an executive session?
I think it would be wise.
Sure, all right. Personnel?
Kind of personnel matters.
Okay, would it be hiring, firing?
Well, it's related to finding my replacement, plus whoever that may be, some things that are problematic.
Is there a motion for executive session for?
I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel hiring.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes. Okay. Dr. Joey.
Pizza. I know, Maureen, I know, and I had bread, and, yeah, I know.
Well, it doesn't happen often.
No.
I guess that's not easy.
But I don't, really, I have bad eating habits, and they've gotten worse since I've been a commissioner.
Right, well, because it's, and you don't really take...
Are we on? Oh, I better, sorry.
I make a zero.
I better quit talking.
I make a motion that we exit executive session.
A second.
Roll call, please, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Is there action?
Uh, no.
Okay, we're going to go in, wait, what's this executive session, employee evaluation?
That's Todd.
Oh, Todd, okay.
But I haven't seen one yet.
I make a motion, we go into executive session for the purpose of employee evaluation.
Can I second that?
Any discussion or questions? If not, roll call, please, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Did you sign any of these?
No.
Sure, so, yes, let me get, let me put this away. Just took this up and signed it, and I don't want to do that. Right here, working to cover the address, Amy to ask them to... She's coming back later.
Motion to come out of executive session?
Yes, I make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Roll call, please, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Good to see you guys again.
Thank you.
The weather's a little more pleasant than last year. We were always raining Captain Dogs last night.
All right, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on where we're at with the outreach retention program. So far this year, we've made sixty calls, and I sent you over a list of the companies that we've managed to talk to so far this year, and actually we did sixty-one this morning, almost got sixty-two with the guy, forgot we had an appointment, even though I made it yesterday. Stuff happens.
He's busy.
Yeah, I hope he is, I hope he is. You know, the reason again why we do these calls, and I'll refer to this a little bit as we go through here, is, you know, to build relationships, to try to address short-term needs, and also just look at long-term strategic needs. As I said, sixty calls done this year. Over the life of the program, since the Big Business Resource Network, since January twenty fourteen, we've done one hundred and ninety-three visits in Port County. Now, some of these are repeat visits, you know, as we get into fifteen, or again, building those relationships again with companies.
It takes time.
Takes time, and it has to be maintained. I'll tell you what, I'll give you an example, I have a company locally here in Ravenna that this is probably the third time we've visited them, and this is the third time there's a new person there. It's, you know, it's a major...
You have to keep going back in that case.
You have to keep going back, yes, exactly. Well, you have to keep going back and reintroducing yourself, and, and if there's no institutional memory, like an HR person that sticks around, you know, the general manager keeps changing, it's just like, hi again.
Yeah.
You know, and trying to get in the door again and explain who we are and what we're trying to do. So, that's a bit of a challenge.
Sure.
To stress some of the short-term needs, and you give, you know, the, our relationship with Ohio Means Jobs down here with Jobs and Family Services. Of the one hundred and ninety-three visits, that generated about eighty-four referrals to Ohio Means Jobs, which has generated like forty-five job orders. Three OJT's, I understand, were successful, and three more that they're, they're still working on, I suppose. Four summer youth, youth employment program companies. Three companies attended the KSU Job Fair, and one company also, we, we also followed up on the shared work program, because they were looking at layoffs. Some of the other groups that we've been working with, just this month, just to give you an example, Small Business Development Center out of Akron, we called out a couple of times, one to help a company with some marketing, another to help the company with their financial savings, because they were looking, they have to refinance some loans and some debt. And at that point, I thought it would probably be a good thing, if they were going to do that, they probably needed to take a look at their projections and make sure the numbers could be explained. We also made a referral to the Ohio Employee Ownership Center this month, a local company here, that is, you know, they're reaching a point where they're very, very successful, but they, they need to talk about succession. And neither of the men have a family that's interested in the, in the business, and so they're, so we referred them over to Chris Cooper.
For the, maybe that's the answer. For the ESOPs, you work with Kent State?
Yes, yes, the Ohio Employee Ownership Center is located at Kent State. Roy Mezering is, is that gentleman.
Who was the other gentleman you named?
Chris Cooper is just my first-line contact there.
Oh, at the ESOP.
Yeah, right, yeah, for instance, just like with Neighborhood Development Services, I wouldn't call Dave, I'd call Jim Shank.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah, so. So, that's just to give an example. Another one, too, we're working with a company in the, in the region here that, it's a strong company, it does, it does what it does the best in the world, literally. But the demand for its product is starting to decrease. And so, one of the things was, we engaged Magnet, which is the Manufacturing Advocacy Growth Network, got that right?
Yeah, I think so.
My friend along, I'm going to make sure I get my acronym steady. But to work with them on looking at, okay, you do this very well, you have this equipment, now what else could you do with this equipment? What other markets could you be servicing? So, they were looking at that. And those are some of the short-term things. And even just today, I had a call from one of the companies that we worked with, you know, they're having an issue with some of the utilities, and it would, and so, we've got our friends at Ohio Edison working on it, and they're one of our partners and contributors as well, too, so they're, they're quick to react to these things. And it helps the customer out a bit, if they know that there's someone we can talk to to help, help them with a problem. The general outlook from the calls, from what we can gather and see, things are still pretty good. Most of the companies are still saying that their, their sales are going up a little bit to a great deal. In fact, we're just with a company this morning, the one that didn't show up. They said they had their best quarter ever.
Wow, that's good to hear.
Though there is some softness in the market, and a lot of it's related to the oil and gas industry, oil, gas production, and exploration, to be exact. We've, we've had, in fact, this company, you mentioned that today, too, because the product they supply would go on drilling rigs, for instance. We've heard some softness, and some of the companies are either, you know, have declined in sales, in fact, one company's reported some layoffs, because they, the products that they supply. Again, that's a cyclical industry, oil and gas goes up and down, and, you know, if, if the price of oil gets up to about seventy bucks per barrel, it'll be moving back up again, so that's where we're at with that. So, generally, everything seems to be pretty well out in the, at least the economy that we talk to, which is the manufacturing and industrial companies. Give you an example of some of the more, the long-term use of the data that we, we collect. Maplewood, in response to the demand from companies, is putting together, as we speak, a maintenance training program that'll last a year, go from September to June. They're right now busily signing up companies, and part of what we've been doing is helping to identify from our database, companies that have identified maintenance employees, being one of the more difficult groups to get. And so, what we're, what we're looking at, what some of these companies are just, you know, saying is, I have people, they know a little bit, I know that they're good employees, they show up every day, they show up sober, they, they, they do everything I ask of them to do, but I think they have more potential. So, I think they're, this is, what they're going to do is, you're going to use this program here at Maplewood to take these types of employees, to get them more training.
You know, I think Kent State had a program also. I'll describe it to you, and then stop me the minute you recognize the program. What they would do is they would send professors to the factory and give them classes during lunch hour, or maybe before, after the work things, and eventually, and the company would pay for the professor, and then they eventually get a degree.
Oh, okay. We have, we actually have a couple of companies, many companies, actually. For instance, Delta Systems is an excellent example. They have tuition reimbursement programs that sends their, their people off to, for further education. And what you were talking about, at least when you first started talking about, it reminded me, we work very closely with their Corporate Learning Center, and they're very big in the lean manufacturing. In fact, we made a referral to that last year to one of our local companies, Jour Regal, to connect them up with our folks there, and the person I, is usually Greg Ferby?
Ferby, yes.
Yes, got it right. We usually, that's the person who, and he's under Amy Lane over there.
Yes, right.
So, yeah, we try to make those connections as well, too. And any time they put out stuff, we try to get them to our newsletter as well, too, because again, they're one of our contributors, and of course, one of our major employers in the county.
Like, what you're doing with Maplewood, because those are the lower-level employees, like if you're talking about maintenance.
Well, no, maybe it's people actually higher-level employees. Oh, yes.
Doing the machinery or...
Yeah, I want to talk about doing the floors.
Oh, no, no, yes.
No, you're talking about...
These are not people mopping floors.
Fixing machines.
Right, because our, and, you know, I was just, I was just with Lisa Berry, who's one of the people who are championing this, because she needs this, too. Because we are so capital-intensive today, Kathleen, you can't let a million-dollar machine go kaput.
No, absolutely, no. I would not have thought of those people as being maintenance.
Well, that's what they're termed, they're called maintenance.
That's what they're, I'm using the new language, but...
Well, and I'll throw a new, I'll throw you a new word, here we heard this one, mechatronics.
That sounds more technical.
Well, it is, that's what it is. It is the maintenance, it's really what the maintenance person today is. They not only pull wrenches, but they also program, they diagnose.
You call the people who do the floors and the cleaning, you called them custodial?
They would probably be custodial, janitorial staff or something like that. And in fact, a lot of the workers themselves, you know, they, they're, many of their, their tasks are to keep their stations clean themselves, so it's not unusual, for instance, we're walking on the factory floor to see, you know, a guy who's, or a gal who's just put something into, like a CNC machine, sweeping up filings and stuff like that, and to make sure that their station's clean, it's a big part of its safety.
Yeah. And the utilities that you mentioned earlier with one of the companies, do you work with NOPEC or?
We work with NOPEC very well, yes. In fact, we talk about their programs frequently to companies that are in the townships or in the cities and villages that are served by NOPEC. In fact, I know NDS is working closely with NOPEC on their particular program for the funding of energy savings and stuff like that. That program where they use the property tax, kind of like a vehicle to help fund that.
Great.
Yeah, in fact, I was just with Jim Shank yesterday, talking about that.
In some communities, like I remember Kent does, for those businesses that use large quantities of water, they have different price differentials. So, if you're a huge user, you get a bigger, you know, bigger discount.
Yeah.
I don't know if all cities do that.
Paris, I think, yeah, for instance, Paris Industries, it's that kind of, they're a big water user.
Yeah.
Brad, what are you finding in the sense of the skilled labor force, I mean, the people that are available, and the demand that they're staff? I know what you've explained about Maplewood with this new program, but is there still that?
There's still a major demand.
Major, yeah.
We're still seeing a disconnect between, you know, what, our unemployment rate, if you hadn't heard, is now at four-point-five, even under the new Department of Labor math, whichever, whatever works today.
Right.
We got it for the next ten years, so it'll, it'll get to be through to sixty-five.
Comes into question.
That's really excellent.
Yeah, it's really excellent, it's, it's a double-edged sword. It's a double-edged sword, and I still think we have plenty of men and women out there. One of the things our Workforce Development Committee is working on is trying, trying to identify how you, you know, you broach some of these, these, these groups of people, and help them get into the workforce. Mike Thompson has done a series of speeches at our, at our, basically, our business roundtables, which we've been holding over at Maplewood in the mornings, he did actually two of them recently, about how companies looking at their own corporate culture can take a person who does not have a lot of work experience, or a lot of positive work experience, and help them to become effective workers. And that, you were...
Yeah, well, and I think, too, that, you know, that you're, when you're talking about addressing the skills gap, and I think the governor's made a big push with some of the new legislation to really focus services on those, that, those group of people who are hard-to-employ, or the many barriers to employment, and how we can help them through the workforce system to make them employable or more employable. And so, I think that, that the state is recognizing that, that, that need to kind of put some resources towards those folks. But the skills gap is huge, and to go back to something you're talking about, really, like with Maplewood, I think now, what a lot of companies are clamoring for is incumbent worker training dollars. Because now they're seeing this, recognizing this ability to, to utilize the talent that they have to move them up, give them a better job, and, you know, that usually includes training.
Right.
Absolutely. And unfortunately, the, as the governor's budget stood, they had made a cut to the incumbent And unfortunately, the, as the governor's budget stood, they had made a cut to the incumbent worker training fund.
Kind of by about two-thirds of what it was. It's interesting, when I first started in economic development back in the eighties, the big issue of the day was not employees, because, you know, we all lived in the Rust Belt. You know, there were men and women still unemployed from the steel mills and all those factories who were unemployed, who were needed work and had good work ethic and had good work skills. That wasn't the issue back in that time. The issue of that time was our unemployment, our interest rates were fifteen, nineteen percent. And companies couldn't afford to buy new equipment.
Yeah.
And it's kind of flipped. Today, our interest rates, in fact, another interesting thing is that, one of the interesting phenomenas we're running into is that banks aren't always that willing nowadays, I don't know if you've heard Jim Shank talk about this, but they don't seem to be all that willing to share the loans anymore. If they get a good credit, they want as much of that credit as they can get. And so we're not getting a lot of demands for the gap financing or the low interest loans like we once thought, thought I did. But the demand is, as Brenda has pointed out, is more along the incumbent worker training. And what the issue is, at least in Ohio, is that the pot of money that we pull for incumbent worker training comes from the casino licensing fund. And that's due to dry up here. In fact, I think we've got one more year after this year of incumbent worker training voucher money from that source, then it goes away. And it just, it just floors me in that, you know, training a worker, I mean, the companies come and go. But if a worker is, again, gotten advanced maintenance training, will always have machines.
Yes, yeah, get another job.
Exactly.
Yes.
A disconnect.
Yeah, gosh, I can remember, something coming on. A friend of, a good friend of mine died many years ago. And he owned a machine shop in Kent. And actually, a family owned machine shop. I can remember him twenty years ago talking about maintaining those machines. So maybe I was just more acclimated to that. And not having, you know, when you have a person in a shop that has that ability, that's, they're as good as gold, if not more so. But after his death, actually, that company became, was owned by the, his heirs, but who were all women. And then they, I'm trying to think how many years ago, they finally did decide to sell it.
Okay. Does it still exist today?
Pardon me?
Does it still exist today?
You know, I, yes, it does. I'm sure I could, I don't know if the name is still the same, I can identify for you, but.
If you show me where is that in Kent?
Yeah, it's, you know, the street that Richards, the florist is on, forty-three Malloway.
Forty-three, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, forty-three and.
Okay.
Yeah, so a machine shop, a wooden shop.
But it's built before they're there.
Yeah, I know there's Tree City, Porridge Mole, there's Tree City, that's the street, right above the, right in the township. Going down there, there was like Highway or something, I forget, come to me in a few minutes. Lee.
You'll think of it while you're not trying to.
Is it still, still in business? I know they sold it.
It might be, it might be, let me see if I can.
Is it a Woolburn Road or a street?
Thinking Lee Strange, H and W Fairway International? Is that very right?
No, no.
Okay. Because we have a bunch of machine shops in Kent that are doing, Kent Mold a Machine.
Well, it's right in the middle of, yeah, industrial, I mean, residential.
Yeah. One of our biggest supporters over in the manufacturers coalition is the folks at Plonel Machine, which is, you know, right, right there on Maggiore, right?
There is a small percentage of our population that will never be employed for good reasons that are, that just can't work. So what would be the lowest unemployment rate that we would hope to achieve?
It's a good question. If all things went well, I mean, I guess in theory, when they calculate the unemployment rate, they take the population that is working and they add to it the population who is looking for work. They are not working but are actively, and that's the key, that's the key word, actively looking for work. And so if, for instance, you know, the folks you're talking about are not actively looking for work, then they're not included. In theory, you could get to zero. The reality is, the best I've ever seen rates are around two, two and a half percent.
Yeah, it's like five point one four unemployment, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say something around that was what I'd say.
There would always be a percentage of unemployed because they would be moving, leaving one job and looking for another.
Right, there's always, there's always people in the pipeline. Right now, when I was starting, you know, at school in the early eighties, it was, the full employment rate was about two and a half. I would say it's about five percent right now. So if we're at four and a half, we're there.
There are a lot of people, too, that have exhausted looking, particularly, it's something that they feel they are qualified for. That have gone to school and have the credentials and can't find, and they just give up.
There's two numbers that we can look at that tells us that we still have many things to do. One is that when, one of the members on your team mentioned that he doesn't want, he doesn't want to recruit new businesses here because he has a heck of a hard time finding employees now and he doesn't want any more competition. So is that an idea that he has jobs open and he can't get people? So that's one task that we're focusing a lot on with Maplewood and Ohio means jobs. And the other one is the highly educated people that are rare. You know, we have to import them and give them a special visa. I can't remember if we call it W visa or?
There's like an HB.
HB.
Yeah, I was actually just reading an article from the New York Times yesterday on that. It was not a very happy article, by the way.
No, because we're importing people because we simply do not have that kind of talent here.
You know, I'll tell you, one of the companies that we have in the county that's, and we have some really great advanced technology companies in this county. And the one that comes right straight to my mind is Rovisys, which was one of the very first projects we worked on with the Portis Development Board started up. And they, what they do is they design automation systems, going back to why you need maintenance employees, because you're divided. And most of their customers would be food processors, would be, you know, chemical plants. And so they're looking for like chemical engineers. They're looking for electrical engineers, because they're going to design these systems on taking biscuit from the oven to packaging, all that sort of stuff. And, you know, that's one of the things that they're running in short. Another thing they're running, that we, you know, we get called for from time to time, companies like Ametec use these folks, and again, Rovisys, are a two-year degree person. The tech, who can do the drafting with the whatever new system. In fact, I was told AutoCAD is now almost passing.
It's almost what?
I don't know.
It's almost gone?
Yes. There's new, there's new programs going out there. I'm like, I'm just getting used to the old things, guys, you're blowing my mind.
And these three D printers.
Yes, exactly. But it gets into that three D kind of design, that you can do that and, you know, rotate it and, you know, can do this. And those kind of technicians are hard to find, too.
That's why technical colleges or training centers are extremely valuable.
Yeah, they are a great asset to the community, and Maplewood is a great asset.
And it sounds like from. Sounds like from the updates that Dan gives us to in our roundtables, that they are, their enrollments are good and they're, you know, getting solid students coming in there, which is good news, because I think there for a while, our community college has kind of lost their way. So hopefully, they're understanding the importance of those technical skills and the getting bright, good students in there to learn those technical skills is so important right now. A big, another contributor to that big gap that's out there, because everyone's gotten into their minds that they need to go get a four-year degree when there's lots of good jobs for folks who just have two-year degrees or workforce certificates.
But it's okay to do that, because, of course, here I'm getting in my banquet, that education's for quality of life. It's not just job training.
Right.
Well, I agree with you, Kathleen. I'm a history and economics major. I took the economics because I thought I could get a job with it. I took history because it was very broad.
Four-year degrees especially valuable for, in the arts and sciences.
Absolutely.
Especially for leadership.
Couple of other things.
I think there are people with two-year degrees that have leadership qualities.
Absolutely. I mean, I appreciate education, but I think college just isn't for everyone.
And this, and it's nothing to do with how smart they are, whatever.
Absolutely.
It's what they want to do.
My youngest son is a diesel mechanic and he makes more money than I'll ever make.
Yeah.
And he's constantly going to school for technology.
Yes, for the certificate.
Oh, with today's modern engines, I mean, they're trying to keep the emissions down and all that sort of stuff?
Brad, can you comment a little further about what was going to evolve at the old high school site?
Right.
I mean, I've.
At this, at this point right now, I mean, the only thing I can really say is that I know that Stark is still working on it.
Yeah.
They're, you know, they're, they're still, we are still engaging with Stark to see where we can go. And hopefully, we'll have something to announce here sometime this year. You know, when we sat down in 2013 and thought this thought through, we thought we had the idea.
Yes.
Oh, well.
Well, no, no.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Wonderful idea.
It was a great idea.
Well, no, so much effort went into it. I talked to a local banker, not, probably two weeks ago now, three. And I just was kind of, I shouldn't say stunned, you know, maybe that was the word, as to what he shared.
Right.
But, you know, I, again, it's, that's why I ask, I'm optimistic that things are.
I am optimistic, too.
Yeah.
I think something will happen. I don't know if it was exactly as we envisioned it, but something positive will happen for the community.
Yeah. Well, that's a very great, you know, positive way to convey it and, you know, I'm sure it will evolve.
Yes. Couple of other things, just on the PDB side, as you know, the Porter selection is on the four authority side. The four authorities just approved the financing for the three fifty-five flats project in Kent. We were involved in that. We have about thirty-three active projects right now on our list of projects. One of which, hopefully, is signing a lease very soon. It's a new company coming into the area, can't give you too much more information on that, but it's, it'll probably be about thirty new jobs.
Wonderful.
For the community. And Jobs Ohio helped us out with that one, bringing it in.
The next time I attend a Joe Ed meeting, if you're in those meetings, the executive committee, Joe Ed, we go around the room and each jurisdiction kind of gives a report. And so I'm going to call you if I go to the next one.
If you want, if you want to take me along, I'd be happy to.
I have an understanding of what, you know, I do. Primarily through the information I get through you just routinely that we get. But in reporting, you know, you always try to trump the next county. I'm going to say.
I hope we can always trump everybody.
Yes, all right, good, good.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thanks, well.
This is historical, we have two Brad's and two times.
That's like Todd Square.
Yeah, say it. I know.
Let me get your packet.
Okay, very good. Yes, ma'am. As soon as Amy gives me the high sign that she's ready to go, I'll call and order for that, so. All right, let's call this meeting of the Investment Advisory Committee to order. As you will see, our agenda is just the linked deposit program. I asked Amy to, you know, kind of put a pin in the minutes piece, because I found that to be a little confusing last time, there was a lot of duplication and overlap. And we'll just get those at our quarterly meeting at the end of the month, when Meter comes in to go over our investment portfolio again. So having said that, then, we can move into review of the linked deposit program. As we discussed on Tuesday, you had a number of questions you wanted me to take back to the bank, banks plural, as well as some suggestions for changes to the various materials. I can go through some of those if you'd like. I think that's probably the easiest way to go about that, if we want to do it that way. So, you know, one question that was asked, and I think it was by Todd, this one, was what constitutes defaulted and how do we get money back if there is a default? You know, default obviously is like just don't follow the rules or don't pay back the loan. The bank said to them, default, what would happen to that person? And it's going to be in the language of the loan itself. If you default on the loan, your rate would go back to market then plus a penalty rate that they would have. They said that as far as the county's investment goes, it's not collateral, so we can take it back as soon as that process begins. It's considered, you know, repaid, I guess, for lack of a better term, as far as our investment part of that goes. So that was the answer to that question. I'm sure as you looked over the materials, you noticed that there was a fairly substantial change then to the how of the program. So the proposal we looked at Tuesday was something that the banks had initially proposed, a one-year CD that we would roll for a period of time, you know, not to exceed fifteen years. In talking to Denise and Allison from the prosecutor's office a little more, in talking to the banks, there were a couple of hurdles. The prosecutor's opinion was that there is a legal hurdle in place there with respect to the limitations in the Ohio Revised Code and our investment policy as to how long we can go out in the future and invest. So there's that five-year limitation in our policy. It's, that comes from the Ohio Revised Code. And the only time you can exceed five years is if you're supporting debt like a bond. So, you know, having that in mind, it was their opinion that a rolling one-year program would effectively be not a one-year investment repeated fifteen times, but a fifteen-year investment. So they had concerns in that respect. The banks, then, you know, in looking at whether or not we could review and renew on an annual basis, which was another thing you had suggested we look at, they basically said to me, that's effectively a one-year adjustable rate mortgage fifteen times. And for the, for the consumer, they had some concerns about that being clear and understandable. You could see a great deal of fluctuation there, so there's some consumer protection concerns. It's also administratively difficult for them, was their comment, that that would be rather difficult to do. So in this proposal, what you see instead is something that came from the Summit County version of this program. What they do is they buy a five-year certificate of deposit and then they have a five-year discount. So, you know, if your loan period is five years, then you get the benefit of that three percent discount for the entirety of your loan. If you happen to go beyond that, you know, seven, ten, up to fifteen, then you're still getting the benefit of a discount for the first five, but then after that point, it jumps to whatever market rate is. So, you know, that is a product that most, that all the banks have already. They were very comfortable with that. And it's easy for them to write the disclosures to the consumers, the thought being it's also more digestible for folks in the general public and understandable, kind of on its face. So, you know, that was, that's why that particular change was suggested. Another thing that was mentioned, I know, was Denise had expressed in our meeting last time, the proceeding process, you know, in terms of how do I prove that I did what I said I was going to do? She suggested that the banks collect the receipts and then transmit them to us, you know, because the contract is between the borrower and the bank. The bank said no thank you to that, unsurprisingly. Their comment was that that would be very, very difficult for them to get in the business of tracking down that, that stuff. You know, the other comment they sent, and I think it's a valid one, is that the hammer, for lack of a better term, in that agreement is that if you don't provide the treasurer with receipts, then you lose the subsidy. That would still be true. If we're not able to get the consumer to give us the receipts and they just say, I don't have to give it to you, I don't want to, we're still going to be able to tell the bank, hey, we didn't get the receipts from this consumer, upon which, which point the banks can still retract the subsidy. So from their perspective, you know, they sort of saw that as a, it does the same thing. You know, to kind of say that, I took out in all of the forms, you know, the disclaimers at the bottom said basically, if you fail to follow these provisions, you'll lose your subsidy and be subject to prosecution. I just got rid of the subject to prosecution language, because it's clearer and it's unlikely we would actually probably be, yeah, so, you know, to just clarify that.
Denise is comfortable with this new?
I believe so. I ran it by them and they did not have any comment on it. So, I mean, I think her objection probably still stands and that it's, from her perspective, not enforceable. In other words, we can't make the consumer give us the receipts, but.
You can stop the.
It doesn't need to be.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, I made, to the rest of the materials, you know, there were a couple of just sort of typo type things. I made those corrections as well. You know, the last, I think, substantive thing then was the ad materials where we had, you know, service of Brad Crome, Porridge County Treasurer. I changed that in these to program administered by me. I still think it's important that we have some, some thing in there that gives it the imprimatur of the county. I think because my office is in fact administering the program, that makes sense to retain there. So that was the direction I went, I went with those. And I believe that covers most of the questions we had, unless there's something I'm forgetting.
I have a couple that I just read to the new ones. And there's just a little typo on this page, I'll just give you the page.
Okay.
The word is missing.
Thank you.
And then, I'll read through all the others.
Yeah, right.
On that page where it says the home improvement program.
So that's exhibit F?
Yeah.
Okay.
F, yeah. This is just like a typo again, under number four.
Must be.
It must be, the word be.
Sure. Okay.
And then I, I wanted to have you explain number five a little bit.
All right, just a minute. Let me put this correction with its contemporary here. Okay, sure. Right. So that's, you know, when we receive the materials from the banking institution, we will check our system to make sure that they're current on their property taxes and don't owe us any delinquent, any delinquent taxes. You know, we're going to be verifying that they're not asking for more than the program ceiling.
So this is your work.
Yeah, this, this is our in-office processing protocol. Yeah, I just included that because I wanted you to have reference for how we're going to deal with them when they come in.
And for number.
On form number one, make sure the property is not ineligible. Now, number one, I mean, that form that has all those things that you can do, all of those are eligible, are they now?
I'm sorry, so help me with that.
You can have a few on the list.
Oh, yeah, right, I mean, they are. Uh, but again, we're just verifying that they're not telling us, 'cause we do have that section, are you undertaking other, other not described?
Oh, I see, you're right, okay.
You know, so if they were gonna say, I'm putting a hot tub in, you know, we'd probably tell them no.
Um, this one, number G.
Okay. Right.
There's a, a typo there too. Uh, number five should be in program and, uh, okay. Second one, number...
Yeah, I see.
Good.
Gotcha.
And then under seven, um, I, I wondered how you would determine who the likely program participants would be.
It's a great question. So, my staff's actually been working on that for me, um, in anticipation of getting this off the ground when we do. Um, we are targeting people, we initially went with the broadest universe we could think of. So, we started with a ceiling of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home values down to what we thought was gonna be our basement of ninety. Um, that returned us, um, a universe much larger than ten thousand, and so we started to weed back from there. I believe the place that we landed on was a hundred and, um, a hundred and ten to a hundred and forty-five or something of that, something in that ballpark. Um, you know, and we just came back in from the ends, basically. Um, but we're targeting people who fall in the range, um, you know.
Um, with all the other things that you're doing here, which seems pretty thorough, why would you, why would we wanna spend as much money as we're spending, uh, sending a postcard to people who may not be at all interested in home improvements? 'Cause you're doing all the right things in terms of notifying people who do the work, banks who are loaning, I mean, newspaper ads, all of that. And one of the more expensive items is number seven.
Mm-hmm.
So, I just wondered why...
Yeah, I mean, the thought process there is that, um, not everybody gets the newspaper or is gonna see some of these other things and that's gonna let us, that's our direct line to people who stand to benefit from the program. So, that honestly, you know, I cut back the ad campaign significantly before I chopped that out, only because I think you're, you're really gonna have a lot more return from that part of the investment than from anything else. You know, and I don't know, the, the, for instance, the five column inch newspaper ad's pretty little. You're only for the other forty-eight weeks, so, you know, in the interest of, of pairing, if we had to cut some of that out, that'd be where I'd wanna do it.
See, I would think, I was really impressed with all the things on the list because when you go to apply for a building permit, if they give you the brochure, you know the person's going after a loan.
Mm-hmm.
Or whatever. So, there's so many points of contact, like real estate people, uh, so many points of contact for those who may possibly be interested. I, it just seemed to me that doing a random mailing of those that own homes between these dollar amounts, maybe, did you say, how many homes did you say that was?
Um, I, it's, it ended up being nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight.
So, say ten thousand is a right amount.
Yeah, yeah.
So, mailing these randomly to ten thousand homes, how many of those homes would actually be interested in doing the repair and throwing money for it?
Mm-hmm.
And my guess, it would be a very small percentage, so it just seemed to me that the, um, benefit from number seven was far less than all the others and that maybe instead of spending all that money on seven, use that money for some of these other things. But anyway, that's your decision, but it's something you might wanna watch the first time.
Yeah, certainly, and I can ask, I might actually make a note.
To see if you get a good return.
I'll ask John in Medina where, how that, 'cause that, this is his idea.
Yeah.
Might, might, and might, you know, for all the reasons I mentioned, that those are people who are eligible and, you know.
If it's productive, if, if it's not, then you could drop it next time or something.
Yeah.
Can you, um, also run that with the list from the health department on the septic citation list?
Yeah, you would send mailing to them. That would be super to do that. Well, and there may be some people that formally think that they would qualify for anything and maybe put some things off. So, I do, you know, overall, we haven't, you know, become cognizant if there is a program and I qualify.
Mm-hmm. That's not a bad point though, I'm gonna, I'm gonna check on that.
The septic system is a good idea.
Yeah, I'll check on that one.
And the last one was on the very last page.
Okay. Brochure, yes.
So, my question is, and I think it's already been decided, but I wanted to just be sure, are we sure we want to include rental properties? And the reason, my reasoning in hesitating to do that is, first of all, if we have plenty of money, so the owner occupied is, is not serviced, then I would prefer not doing it. But the other reason is because it's a business. People own a home and they rent it to earn money.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's like subsidizing a business and I just think this program should be for homeowners.
Yeah, I mean, I understand. I had that conversation actually today. I went to the Kent Lions Club to speak to them about some of the stuff that our office is doing and we touched on this, you know, just kind of in broad strokes. Um, and I got that question from someone in the audience. Um, you know, my response at that point was basically, you know, we're, we're focusing on, on the single-family dwellings and for that reason, you know, if someone happens to own several of those, 'cause they asked about the income limitation actually also.
Yeah.
But, you know, the idea is to improve properties, um, in my mind, so that, you know, it gives us an avenue for doing that. And we can watch, you know, if we, if we find that there's a bunch of, of, you know, landlords that are taking advantage of it, wrap it in.
Well, it's only doing it for once.
Yeah, but that's, and that's the concern, right. So, it's only the one property. My thought is, if you, you know, if you're standing in the shoes of a landlord, you would focus it on the property that has the greatest need for a repair.
Right.
At least that, that's gonna be the whole...
You know, Brad, we've had that concern with the land bank too, I'm sure you've heard that, because we did take down properties that, you know, and they still own the property, then we took down the, the building, so we actually did, but it was for the whole Portage County, you know, and that's the way we looked at it. And you're gonna get an argument on either side, I mean, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have more data once we, once we've done it and have some, some, you know, we can draw conclusions from that after, I'm sure.
Well, the fact they can only do one kind of...
Yeah.
That should, yes.
I'd hope.
Obviously limit it. You've done a lot of work on this.
Yeah, indeed.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We need a motion to, um, make the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, so if there's no, um, no questions about the rest of the packet then, that we have the investment advisory committee resolution drafted.
Okay.
Um, it's substantively the same. Um, I did take your comment that we needed to include exhibits. Um, so, you know, the same exhibit num, letters, um, lettering will work for both resolutions and, and that's included there. But that's really that, and then changing the, um, one-year CDs to five-year CDs. Those changes have been made to this resolution from what was presented on Tuesday.
So, the first resolution though is for the investment...
It's for us, yeah, us as a committee to adopt, and then we'll adjourn and go to the Board of Commissioners.
Are we gonna make that motion?
Uh, sure, you want me to?
That'd be great.
So, who?
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you very much, I appreciate that and, um, you know, I think this program is a lot stronger than it would have been, um, because we did this deliberative process. Um, I really appreciate the feedback you've given throughout the course of that, so. Um, having said that then, as a valedictory remark, a motion to adjourn this committee.
So, who will that will do?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Okay. Um, now then, to the next resolution, I believe we can go straight to that.
Well, I think we have to do it in...
Yeah, and I don't know if we, sorry, do you have to call yourself back in session? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, well, we, actually, we, we, we're in session, I think we just convened, or you convened us since then. In any case, we will, we can, we as county commissioners, I, I think we were still, we were in session.
I'll make a motion to, uh, create the Portage County linked deposit program and approval of funding allocation as recommended by the Investment Advisory Committee. Is there a second?
My second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we're gonna then, just, um, by way of next steps, I'll inform the banks that we're ready to do that and ask them for their depository agreements. I will get those in hand before we transfer their allocation, um, and then we'll, uh, we'll make that transfer and start, uh, start the process, so.
Is this from the...
Will there be a separate resolution assigning that money to the banks?
True.
Or did this one do that?
I think that did it, so, you know, we've got...
You might wanna do a roll call.
No.
On this resolution.
Oh, okay.
Just to be sure.
Can you back up, Amy?
Yeah. Kathy?
Yes.
Vicki? Yes.
Yes, thanks, Tom. Did you have any other?
Uh, Todd Peitz is here to answer a question regarding the zoning that Randy...
Oh, right.
Yeah, did you ask Randy a question? This is obviously...
This is something else.
Brad is over here.
Thanks.
Well, thank you for all the work you've done.
Thank you, much appreciated. We'll see you.
I guess I'm just answering a follow-up question to what was asked earlier today. The question was related to the townships, do, does township zoning orders typically have provisions for hours of construction to control noise? There's, there's, it's almost a two-part question, 'cause I would say yes and no, that some, some communities do have hours of, of construction and some do not, um, but they usually all have something to control noise. Um, so that's important, I think noise is the, the most important part of that, but construction at certain times of the day aren't necessarily... I mean, just did something for Manaway, um, multi-facility, they limited the hours of operations for that. The second thing, if not, should we recommend such wording? And I think that is true, we should, and I'm not sure which community, this, the reference to pipeline, and should we, um, help write this, I guess, uh, recommend something to this community?
Yeah, what happened is I got a call from, um, resident near Allen Road Injection Well, and there have heavy machinery and lots of noise day and night.
Twenty-four seven?
And so, he called ODNR and asked, how come you're allowing that to happen? ODNR said, we don't have anything to do with that, that's local jurisdiction. Um, your local community has the power to control noise and also hours of operations. I know in Kent, the zoning code has hours of operation for, for noise, like even for the garbage trucks coming down the street, that kind of thing. So, I think it's six AM till maybe nine PM or something, I don't know what it is anymore, but, so, the question was, would you, we thought you were the logical person to ask 'cause you know so much about this.
Sure.
For those, the communities that have it, great, for those that do not, would you be willing to write a model piece of...
Sure.
Legislation, or what you call it?
Noise, uh, they already have, most of them already have noise, but it's basically hours of operation.
Hours of operation, maybe write a model for each of those kinds of things, um, and then present it to those districts that don't have it.
Okay.
So that they could consider whether or not they wanted it.
First of all, you'd have to take that to the executive committee.
Well...
Wouldn't you to ask?
Well, no, you guys, you, you, when I say you guys, that's, excuse me ladies. Um, when, when the commissioners request, can request anything from us, just like a township or village could request, any member can request us to, to research something.
To go ahead and write it and...
Yeah, and I would use your, your technical assistance hours and then, and one of the first, well, the first thing I'm gonna do is not just go off and write, I'm gonna, first I'm gonna find out, you know, you know, exactly which communities, uh, would, this would impact, and then I would...
Should we not contact the communities?
I was mentioning, I would, I would, I would do...
I would think we would wanna give them fair warning while we're doing...
Under the director's report, uh, at the meeting next Wednesday, I would, I would announce that, that this was a topic of discussion, that I'll be preparing a draft model language and just to give them the heads up on that and then, and more would be forthcoming. And I think, I think that would suffice for the time being. I'm not, I, I always tell them that regional planning isn't here to run anything down your throats, we're here to work for each community.
Yeah, it's just simply having something of convenience.
Yeah.
They don't have to adopt it, I mean, that's up to them.
Yeah, I think, I think that there'd probably be some exemptions, I'm thinking of state construction crews and I think also snow plowing removal and things like that. We'll remove that.
I think this was, we were told it was a, a generator maybe, something that's running compressor all night long.
And, and I think that's true, and, and you had mentioned injection well, but I also heard that is occurring for the actual well drilling, um, for the fracking wells.
Oh.
They have compressors running twenty-four seven, and they say they have to have that running now.
That's what Mary said, they have to have it. So, then does that come down to a, well, again, it's within the zoning, would that be just depending on what jurisdiction wants to do to enforce it?
Well, there's, there's a couple of things. You can have exemptions, which we don't wanna exempt everything, and then what's the point of having it? Um, but the other thing too is that this, in the first community, it's complained about the, uh, the fracking wells for the noise and they've, they've, you know, may, some communities have made them go to great length, I think, and I don't think noise is protected, noise isn't protected from them.
You can ask them to do some mitigation.
Exactly.
Or put up fences, barriers.
Sound barriers, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
They put up some pretty, you know, significant sound barriers, you know, in front of that, well, when I say in front, around the, the compressor, so that it shoots it somewhere else or keeps it from, from going into the residential house or neighborhood that's right behind it. So, there are ways to do that. They won't do that unless they're asked or required to, so if you make a requirement, then they'll, they'll have to do it, so.
Yeah, I think I bring this up because there was the last thing that we did, um, that we were, um, suggested that we ask. We, we came up with the idea and I, there was one township trustee who pointed out to us, uh, that we should check with the prosecutor about where our jurisdiction was. Yeah, that was on the, I think on the, again, on injection wells. And actually, the point wasn't, we knew that we didn't have the jurisdiction. We were, you know, trying to follow up on what was, we were asked to do, so, that's what, as we proceed, I, you know, we just need to let them know. You know, we, right, we've been asked, so that's what we're doing.
And I don't think that, I, I think that's true about the, the location of the, and allowing them to happen in the locations, you don't have, you don't, nobody has much control over.
No.
However, I do think that the hours of operation slash noise, um, we may have some ability to regulate some of that.
Right. Some of them I think will be very happy to get it, and of course, others...
They don't have to adopt it, I mean, it's just something...
No, right, exactly.
It's an educational thing, so...
Right, right.
Um, the other concern that he had was that there was, they're taking a lot of dirt from there and moving it. And he believes that a few years back, a lot of trees were killed because of contamination of that soil. And he's worried that they maybe do not, they have to have, I forgot what he called, maybe you know what I was wearing? Um, the term for a, a permit that you need to ensure that you take the contaminated soil and dispose of it properly.
Right.
And so, he wanted to know whether or not they had that kind of permit. So, that was, I, I left that information with the ODNR individuals, so...
Yeah, we just had a letter from Jack Medved, from the Health Department, on one of the landfills, or both, two of the landfills, and talked about, in that letter, he references the process that they use to clean the soil.
Mm-hmm.
And I can't, I don't know what it is either, but it's in one of those two letters, I think, we had that on Tuesday.
So, who would, um, who would, would that be the Health Department? Who, who would be in charge of checking to see if they're moving contaminated soil?
I think that's ODNR, yeah.
They have to do that?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, well, they've, they've got the word already.
Well, I'll, I'll look into this though, find out, whatever I can find out.
Okay.
All right.
Great, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom, thank you very much. Okay.
You name a motion, we've done the journal...
We did, yes, is that it?
We need a motion for adjournment?